Number three, financial monthly report. John?
Mr. Mayor, I know that Julie's sending out the financial monthly report that Ms. Walker prepared and she put us hot off the press. Has everybody got my clear copy of this today?
Yes.
Yeah, did I get my copy? Oh, okay. But, Ms. Mayor, I'll turn it over to Pat. Can you just go through the monthly financial report?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Mayor, members of the council. I'm sorry for the late delivery. It's been one of our workdays since we've had prepared for the audit. The auditors are starting their final stages of your audit. And we've been trying to get everything to them in kind of manner so that we can do audit that earlier than you have done any other year. So I apologize for the delays. I realize you're not going to digest anything. There's something really important to come up with this month. It's a narrative. We kind of walked through it. One thing is we're going to do numbers, but because of COVID-19 and all the things that we're facing, I think it's very, very important that we have had a discussion on the revenues in each of the funds. So I'm just going to walk you through the narrative. And then as the week goes on, if you look at the tables that tie to the narrative and you have any questions, just let Mr. Kissinger or myself know. And I'd be glad to follow up with any of you to answer any questions. So if you just go to the memo that's on the top, this is the narrative that I'm talking about and mainly where it starts in the general fund summary. And I think at the end of the day, you like to see the numbers. You want to see the numbers, which is the right thing to do, but you also want to know, are we okay? What does this mean? Is the general fund doing okay? And I guess the answer for the very first month of the year is yes, we're doing okay in the general fund. If you take a budget and you divide it up evenly for 12 months, the first month would be 8.33% of the budget. The next month would be 16. And you move forward every month and adding 8.33 to get to the 100% of the budget. So this is probably the hardest month to report on, just like the first quarter will be, because you were just starting fiscal year. And looking at 8.33% of the budget is saying that all things being equal, you would receive in 8.33% of revenues and 8.33% of expenditures would be spent. But we all know that's not reality, because you have different types of revenues within your different funds. So in other words, in general fund, you receive local taxes, sales taxes every month, but there's seasonal fluctuations that happen, so you don't really receive it at 8.33% every month. What this does do, though, is give you indicators. So that if you see that you've taken in for the month of July or the next month through August, you've taken in only 5% of your revenues and your target is 8.33, well, you need to look at your revenue categories and say, is this a problem? Do we need to be concerned? I can tell you for the first month of fiscal year, there's nothing to be concerned about because we've got another 11 months to go. But the closer you get to the end of fiscal year, the more important this monitoring will be, so that the council can make some decisions, budgetary and financial decisions, before it was too late. So that's the whole purpose of this monitoring. The first one I just want to mention is general fund revenues. And I do in my narrative have Table A that ties to this. And I present total major revenue categories, meaning local sales tax and then state share incomes. And what we are seeing is that you're slightly down from where you were in fiscal year 19 by 200-some thousand. But part of it might be that there's a timing issue of when you record the sales tax collections. Either you get it on the 31st of July, it doesn't appear till August. So when we finally get all of August in in our August report, we'll have a clearer picture of how the first two months of fiscal year have gone. Right now, the local sales tax in Table A finished at the quarter, I mean, I'm sorry, the month, at a budget projection where you're about right on target. So we're about 8% of what the budget is for this year, the first fiscal year month of 2020. On the expense side, you're always going to probably be lower on the expense side. And the reason that you are is because, you know, we just started the fiscal year. There are some departments that do have some overages that I did highlight on the table. And that is mentioned on Table C in your packet. On Table C, that is what is showing, and I'll get to that, is that there's three departments that have slightly overage and have a reason for it. As I mentioned, 8.33% of the budget year has taken place through July. And in my eyes, it's showing a higher amount, and that's because of the fact that they have to pay all their contracts upfront at the beginning of the fiscal year. So it looks like they're over budget, but they're really not. And by the end of fiscal year, that was really out. The other thing is the library department also is because they had purchased catalog automation equipment in July, so it looks like that they're over, but they're not. And then cemetery is just slightly over the 8.33%. On HERF, again, this includes HERF and the overweight fees. On the HERF, we're slightly low on revenue projections, but not by much. But overweight, they only took in $169 for the month of July. The good news on the overweight, though, is that you're not dependent on spending on what comes in. The budget is built on what your current forward fund balance is, so you're okay so far. It would be nice to build up that budget or that revenue in that fund again, but that's probably the lowest I've seen, $169 for that month. On the utility funds, again, you're tracking close to projections on your revenues, but you're spending a lot less on the expense side for the sewer fund. You're spending 3% of the budget versus 8.33, and you've got 7% of the budget on the revenue side. On the water side, you're collecting right on target at the 8.33%, and then you've only spent 6% of your budget. On sanitation, you've brought in about 8% of the budget, which is on target, and you only spent 4% of your budget. So all of these funds are in good shape. There's not anything that I would throw up or reflect in council. We're tracking online, but that's the purpose of these monthly reports, and we will keep you informed. And again, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Ms. Walker, I'm just a little confused. Was it on the overweight fees? In other words, did they take out more money to state that there's only 169?
That's all we received.
I know, that's all. No, I understand that that's all we received, but usually we get more. Is it because of the construction? They're taking the allocations out now?
I'm not sure on that. I think we need to follow up on it because it's so low.
Yeah, it's so low.
I didn't know it had anything to do with the border being closed to nonessential travel either.
Ms. Walker?
Yeah, Ms. Walker, the state, the state suspended it for the, I think, I can't, don't recall since one month, but I think it's been since June or July that the state suspended the overweight fees.
And that would explain it.
Correct. It was done through the state that they suspended the charging anybody the overweight fee.
But it's back on.
You think that that's the reason it was slow?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Not because they're taking the money to pay our share?
I'm not sure if they're taking our, if they're deducting our share yet, but I'll follow up on that. But I know that the governor suspended the overweight fee for a period of time, but they're back on.
I think this month they started back on.
Yeah.
He needs the money to pay for the freeway, too.
Thank you, Pat. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, clear.
Ready for the report?
Yes. Number four reports. Number one, discussion on S&amp;P Nogales Rating Report.
Mr. Mayor, recently with the help of Pat and our finance department, we had a rating evaluation by S&amp;P, and we have upgraded our financial status. And I'll let Ms. Walker explain that situation in this letter and how we were able to accomplish that. Pat, the S&amp;P report?
Yes, thank you for your attention. Mayor members of the council, yes, this is very good news from the city of Nogales. And just for our listening audience, to explain what does it mean by a credit rating? Well, whenever the city goes out and sells bonds, and you have sold bonds, these are bonds that have already been sold. Whenever you go out and sell bonds or you have existing bonds, there are three major credit rating agencies that you can look to to get a rating. And a rating means the higher the rating, the better the interest rate you get on the bonds and the creditworthiness of the bonds. And so you have sold bonds, and this was not evaluated since 2018. So they needed to do a new evaluation because everything's going on, and they want to look at your finances and make sure that they're still creditworthy bonds for the investor for a lot of them. One of the things that they do is they just, they comb through not only your sewer revenues, but they also look at all your local sales tax, your state share revenues, everything. And they also look at how the council is handling the financial situation of the town, from policies to factions. It's a combination of things that they use to evaluate. Your rating was a double A minus or negative rating. And what that means is that usually when they give you a negative rating, it is one step to lowering the overall rating to like an A class instead of double A minus to A. And the city, what that means then is that you're borrowing in the future would cost you more money as they see a decrease in the funds. Michael will probably go into a little bit more detail on some of these things, and I'm just trying to give you an overview, and I'll turn it over to Michael. When they go through this, they send you a list of questions, the raters do. And everything from what your economy is doing to development, to what's planned for the future, what are, they look at your budget, they look at your comprehensive annual financial reports. And then what happened was that myself and Michael got on the phone with the raters that did this and discussed everything from, as I mentioned, all the financial information to what council has been doing, what they did in the budget process, the things that they look for to maintain financial sustainability of the city of Nogales. And with all that being said, they go to a committee who then evaluates it, and they took away our negative, and they made it a double A on stable. What that means is that you didn't get downgraded, they made you stable, and that was a good sign for the city, a good financial sign for the city of Nogales. And with that, I'll turn it over to Michael, and you can add to or, you know, anything that I just presented.
Thank you very much, Ms. Walker. Mayor members of council staff, very interesting to see you all healthy, hopefully doing all right. With regards to the S&amp;P rating, let me give you a little bit more on the background. So prior to the 2018 issuance of bonds, and the 2018 issuance of bonds, which I was full refunding for savings purposes, the city had a double A rating from standard to four. During the rating process of the 2018 bond, S&amp;P had let us know, hey, you know, we're thinking about reevaluating our rating criteria for this type of credit. So we were a day prior to advertising to the world that we were going to sell bonds through a preliminary official statement, a P O S. And then S&amp;P dropped the bomb on us and said, well, per our new rating criteria, we don't feel that you're a double A anymore, and we're going to give you a two notch downgrade, you'd be on A plus with a negative outlook. So my world had just more or less blown straight into the ground. And I was trying to think, okay, well, what do we have to do? Typically, they give you two hours for your fund. I called and I raised help and asked for the weekend, so I spent the weekend working on it and put together every bit of information I could to show that our new rating criteria perhaps didn't cover the credit. Let me get a little bit more information into that. So typically, prior to the rating criteria change, S&amp;P evaluated Nogales' excise tax credits to the fund on the credit, and that is the strength of your revenues historically, where they might go, and then how far above they are your debt service payments, which we call coverage. And you had excellent covenant, excellent coverage, and were a very strong credit. They decided that, you know, and I'm sure a little bit of it gives liability, that they said, okay, well, what happens if their distressed has gone to Nogales? What if something bad happens? And they get through this and continue to manage that credit with what they have. So they were more or less trying to approach the evaluation of the credit from a holistic, a general credit basis, more like a general obligation fund basis, which this credit was not. So I understood where they were going. I didn't agree with it, but we went through that process, and we were able to get the city ratings back up to a double A minus, but they kept the negative outlook. And as Pat says, that was more or less an indication of where they wanted to take it. So if I had a couple of years and they decide to reevaluate us during COVID. And again, I'm thinking of all, you know, this is why I said you kind of hit us with this fourth time, but okay. So Ms. Walker and I got together and we pulled together all the numbers and, you know, prepared ourselves for the rating presentation. And more or less, the way Ms. Walker and I opened it up is, look, we're going to give you all the information you want, what the short of it is, and that you, you know, downgraded it, you know, a couple of years ago for your new rating criteria, and then also gave us the negative outlook. I'm sure that you had in mind some negative threat tests, and well, what happens if this horrible situation, what happens if this horrible situation? Well, we're in the middle of COVID right now, and I'm pretty sure you didn't plan for this. I'm pretty sure you didn't plan for something this severe. And here we are, and the short of it is, is not only the credit, the credit itself, is that not only healthy and continuing to do this as well, if not better, but the city on a whole basis is continuing to do well on a general fund basis. So if we go through this process and show you and prove to you that we've done everything that we are saying we did, how in the world can you, if you can give us this negative outlook, a potential downgrade? How many more hoops do you want to jump? We did. And I think they took that at the heart because it took little time for them to come back to us and say, we are removing the negative outlook and reaffirming the double A minus. Ms. Walker, does that more or less cover the story?
Yes, exactly.
So that is the good news. The unfortunate news is that it doesn't affect your rating or what you pay on an interest basis every year or from year going forward. It's merely an indication of what your credit would be going forward to be working with. But it was the worst time to face analysis and the city based on the way it runs itself financially came through with time and health. And not only did we get through it, we had the negative credit outlook. So I'm proud of my client. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, in part of the analysis they were doing for the bond rating, they also analyzed some options for a publicly outstanding liability. And I asked both Michael and Pat to prepare a presentation to mayor and council to talk about potential funding options or strategies on our unfunded public safety liability. And with that said, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to turn it over to both Pat and Michael. And they have a presentation to give you. I don't know if we were able to, we weren't able to print that, hand it out, but it is up on the board. And I do have it up on the board, Pat, but Pat can also probably share it here. So if I, I'm hoping it's going to be in both places. Pat and Michael, it's all yours.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor, members of the council, I'm glad you mentioned that, John, because I failed to mention that PSPRS was also one of the things they, they're very aware of in the state of Arizona, and they discuss about the liability and the impact it might have on the future. So that was part, a big part of the analysis also, and why we thought this would be a good time to brief council on this. Let me try to share my screen here. And I'll bring it up here. Oh, it says host disabled participant screen sharing.
Well, Pat, I have it up here.
Okay.
I don't know if you can see it, but I do have it up here, and I'm on page one. So if you could just direct me to page down, I can do that, too.
Okay. So the first slide is introduction and overview. And where this started is that council had adopted a PSPRS system policy that set a goal of the payoff of the unfunded liability by 2036. And in that policy, exactly what I just mentioned, but in looking at the budget for this year 21, the council wanted to see if they were to pay off this unfunded liability for police and fire, public safety retirement system, how much would they have to pay each year? And so what we did, what I did was just look at what the unfunded liability was as of June of 19, divided that by the 16 years, and said, okay, how much do we need to pay off each year in order to do that? Now, that's a very quick and easy way to do it, but then in reality, there's no actuarial that is that quick and easy to do. But that was for budgetary purposes. Amazingly, it came pretty close to what we're going to be talking about tonight just by doing that, that exercise. One of the things that council wanted to know was all the information regarding the different avenues you could take. Should we take the $2 million out of our bank account and pay down the unfunded liability? Should we be looking at investing our money instead and just paying our annual liability? And there's been discussions of what they call pension obligation bonds and selling, that's paying, selling bonds to pay for the unfunded liability, but what you're doing is replacing debt with debt. And Michael will be going into pension obligation bonds in more detail. The other thing that we had, the city had purchased some software called, from Gov Invest, where they take actuarial information from PSPRS, and they can run various scenarios in their software to determine how much of the savings you will have over the life of the unfunded liability debt. And so Michael and I got with Gov Invest and had this analysis run and did the scenario that if you were to pay off $1 million of police, a million and fire, what would that look like in savings and what does that mean? The more we got into it, the more we realized how many factors go into it. And so what we wanted to do was present a slide on all the factors that go into any analysis that we did, because it can be a little misleading just looking at it on the surface. So, John, if you could go to the next slide, not the Gov Invest previous slide, but the one that says analysis?
Yes, ma'am, we're there.
Okay. So the city is considering a one-time $2 million contribution split between the Dallas Police and Fire, PSPRS plans. So we asked them to assume $1 million are made, $1 million to police and $1 million to fire. The thing that we found out is that recently it was announced that the rate of return on assets for 2019-20 was 0%. So in the assumptions, we said, okay, 0% in 1920, 5% for 2021, and then 7.3% for legacy and 7% for what they call tier one contributors in public safety retirements. Now, you're going to say, well, I thought it was the average of 7.3%. It was. Up until last week, had they released anything about what their asset recovery was? And they think they're going to be back there to the 7.3% by '21, '22 and moving forward because that's been their overall average. But as we get into this discussion more, there's a lot of things up in the air. Other actuarial assumptions that remain constant is that the wage base is about 3.5%. They're looking at whether or not that is a realistic assumption. They may change the assumptions because people have not been getting raises in the system, and therefore, instead of changing all the assumptions moving forward and possibly increase the unfunded liability. The discount rate, as we said, was 7.3% for legacy, which is the outstanding unfunded liability. I don't want to get too technical on you because if you listen to the actuarials, they're very, very smart, but they, tons of information that are what if scenarios. amortization method period is the same as June 30th, 2019 valuation report. So if you go to the next slide, again, we're just listing out what the assumptions are. And we said, okay, you can trigger $1 million in 2021. Let's say we write a check this month to PSPRS, what will be our return over what are our savings over the life of the debt? And what they came back with is that it would be a net present value of over $830,000. We have to, we have to make our annual contributions, which is around $3 million, but if we made an additional $1 million, we could potentially save, and I say potentially, by $830,000. If you go to the next slide, it's the fire, and it's about the same, it's $830,000.
Ms. Walker?
Yes?
This is Michael. I just would like to offer an analogy. So more or less, what this slide is showing is that like a mortgage upfront, if you were able to, you know, throw in some extra money that you had towards the mortgage to reduce the principal balance on which interest is charged. So by giving that $1 million upfront, you are reducing, you know, more or less that balance on what interest, on which interest is charged. And it is particular, say for police, that's $830,000 present value. Thank you, Ms. Walker.
Yes, thanks. So $830,000 sounds like a lot of money, and it is a lot of money. But there are so many different factors in this analysis that go into any actuarial, like how long will a member live? How long will their spouse live? Who is new into the system? What their wages are? What tiers they're at when you hire them, whether tier one, tier two, or three, for their contribution rates? So it's, there's so many things that go into the mix. There's no way to guarantee 100% that if you paid $1 million this month to police to pay down the unfunded liability, that you would really realize the $830,000. That's the point that we're trying to get across. It's all based on assumptions moving forward. And so with that, we also discussed, there's a lot of things going on right now with COVID-19. You were doing fine financially for the month of July. We don't know what's going to happen this fall, and that's still up in the air. We don't know what the revenues are going to be for sure. But I find it interesting that we tracked the return on investment for your account, which was .06, and that it really turned out to be close to .05 after all for them. So I'm not sure that there's going to be that much of a gain between what we can invest in, and we need to explore some other things on investments and maybe LGIP, Local Government Investment Rule, or something like that, to see what the return on investment could be. The other thing the council had asked about was the pension obligation bonds and how that works and, you know, what are the pros and cons of doing pension obligation bonds? And that's what Michael's going to go into next. Is there anything that the council needs to ask me before Michael goes on to the pension obligation bonds?
No. We're getting no head shake there, Pat.
Okay. All right, Michael?
Okay, so just an hour or so prior to this presentation, we had intended to show you a P O B presentation, kind of more or less a primer as to how they work, you know, the risks, the potential rewards, many other factors. It was in our Go Invest conversation just yesterday that we learned the recent earnings rate for the PSPRS system, and as a result of that, we decided to just hold the presentation. So the short of it is, is I'm going to give you a general idea of how they work, why we hold the presentation. And then both Ms. Walker and I will ask you, given what we've said, is there any interest in us going further in educating you about this? And if so, what additional analysis would you like to see? Is that fair, Ms. Walker?
Yes, I'm sorry, it takes me a minute to unmute.
Okay. So let's see. Over the past few months, there's been a lot of discussion about pension obligation bonds. And as Ms. Walker had said, in effect, you are borrowing, pay off another debt. And I believe that it's hard, a pension obligation bond is an arbitrage, but more or less, you are taking equity from your house, going to play some bets in that. are taking equity from your house, going to place some bets in it. The ineffect is what you're doing. Is that saying that I would not recommend doing a pension obligation bond for the city? No, that's not what I'm saying. I believe there are times for certain things, but behind a pension obligation are a considerable amount of risk. And I believe that a lot of the presentations that have been published by Arizona Investment Bank are self necessary to cover all of that. So a great example would be, and I'm trying to pick up the City of Flagstaff, they recently issued $131 million in pension obligation bond. And they issued that for, I think it was approximately 2.7% all-in true interest. That is, and that was taxable then. That was a phenomenal rate. So I will say this magnificently, it is right now a great time to borrow. You cannot, you cannot argue against that. We are at a historical level. If the city viewed that a pension obligation bond or another financing was in their best interest right now, is one of the best times to store it for people. That's it. So City of, City of Flagstaff issued pension obligation bonds, and when they do, as of May 1, when they receive bond proceeds, I believe that they will 100% compensate, so that means they add no more liability. However, once those, those proceeds are handed over to the retirement system, it all is about the earnings and maintenance of the asset value compared to what the pension obligation bond interest amount is. So one would think that borrowing at 2.6% or 2.7% versus a 7.3% earnings rate at the PSPRS would be a wonderful thing. It would be positive arbitrage, and $131 million, that's a lot of positive interest earned every month. And I think generally, the discussion amongst a lot of municipalities is, well, why wouldn't I do that? That sounds like a total winner to me. It sounds like a silver bullet because of all the problems I have, but right now, I can probably manage most of them. But yeah, that the way an unfunded liability curve works and how it is currently presented for most municipalities in Arizona, it, it just increases almost exponentially there towards the end, and that's an issue. And it's hard to solve because there's just no one else. So return to the City of Flagstaff, one would think that would be an excellent play, and that they did well. Well, on, on a call with Ms. Walker, and I had this yesterday with Gov Invest, they indicated to us that as of last Friday, PSPRS had released its earnings for last fiscal year. That amount was half a percent. That did not include the fees that they are paid for managing that account. So in effect, they approximately earned nothing of last year. So again, return to the City of Flagstaff, how could you not earn more than 2.7% every year? How could we not? So this is a great example. It just happened. You didn't earn 2.7, you didn't earn more, you earned zero. And when you're $131 million, beat into the bed, that's serious, because at the end of the day, this is a cumulative game. And when you get in a hole right up front, well, that could put you in a very serious place. So in summary, are we saying to the city of Nogales that, you know, we shouldn't look at this anymore? No, we're not saying that, but that was a pretty big hit to kind of where we're at. And I think Ms. Walker and I needed a little bit more time to collect some information and, and give you a better picture of where we stand right now with regards to that. Is that accurate, Ms. Walker?
Yes, it is. And, and again, we will continue to look at what we're investing the funds in and how that in your fund balance and your investment portfolio. So anything we make is better than what happened with PSPRS now, since they made zero.
And, and one last thing is, is that so, a lot of the presentations that have been going out have been focused on earnings, but it's not just about earnings, it's about your asset value. So, you know, in the market crash in 2008, the economic crisis, you know, not only were people not earning the rates that they were prior, but also asset value decreased. So equity value, stock, stock values decreased, also real estate values decreased. So it's one thing to go borrow $100 million and not earn a certain rate, but it's another thing to earn a negative 20% because the market crashed and the stocks aren't worth what they were, and real estate isn't worth what it was, and everybody's fire selling everything. And that $100 million turns into $50 million in asset value, although next year, you're, you're making 7% or 8%, you're only making the asset value afterwards, which is $200,000. So again, there, there are a lot of things to consider. And at the end of the day, I wish I could give you a silver bullet, but math is what it is, and, you know, reality is what it is. So Ms. Walker and I will continue to work hard to, to, I guess, researching and providing analysis on whatever it is that you want us to look at in the event that you do. I'll yield the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Mr. Mayor, any questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Anybody?
I do.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Vazquez, when you're talking about the pension obligations, the funds, and you use the City of Flagstaff as an example, did they have to put up collateral for those funds? What did they put up?
Would you like to give, would you like detail on that?
Would you please?
Okay. So they issued $131 million in certificates of participation, so not backed by excise tax revenue, not backed by GO bonds. And typically, the way it works in Arizona is there is a bag of assets that an issuer puts up for security. And Flagstaff, Flagstaff takes the, the number or combination of assets that they pull together for this particular credit, because there's going to be credit, so as I understand it, they pulled together approximately $40 million-ish in assets for this credit. So, you know, not nearly 50% on, on what it is that they, they are.
Well, my specific question, Mr. Vazquez, is, did they use any of their buildings as collateral?
Yes, they did.
And do we presently have any of our buildings up for collateral?
You do. The Municipal Development Authority.
What buildings do we have up for collateral? Is that what you're talking about, that we have a $29.8 million in direct debt outstanding?
Right. So you had, you had asked me to pull together a list of what those assets are, and that, that comes from one of the leases. So there, those assets are encumbered by the lease, which is all part of the legal structure in the MDA. So I provided that to you, it's quite substantial, I can, I can read forward to you, I guess.
I, I don't remember receiving that particular list. But anyway, Flagstaff encumbered collateral with their buildings, and the City of Nogales with the Municipal Development, we have put up for the outstanding debt of approximately $30 million collateral on our buildings too. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Is that, is that what is referred to as lease rental payments?
In effect, yes. So the lease rental payments are more or less the debt service payment to, for those bonds. And the, the buildings that are secured by the lease are, well, that is the security for those.
Okay. I didn't realize that, but if I could get a copy of what buildings are up for collateral, I'd be grateful, Mr. Vazquez. Also...
I have it here.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vazquez. If you can forward it to Mr. Kissinger, he can forward it to all of us. Also, Mr. Vazquez, there's, on the upside scenario of this report that was just alluded to, they said here that we could raise a rating if the city improves its policies and procedures. My, my original question was that I, I wanted to make sure that we develop a policy, and I'm almost sure I used the example of Oral Valley's policy. I, I want to make sure that we have a policy, because, you know, council people and mayors and top management administrators, we come and go. And we want to make sure that there's a policy in place so that if anybody else wants to come in and say, you know what, we're putting a stop to all of these payments, we're not going to pay it, and we're going to invest it in police equipment, fire equipment, whatever. And they forget about that. So I want to make sure that we have a policy in place. The both of you help us to develop a policy. How much money can we afford to give every year? And I know we're already making, to reduce the unfunded pension liability, we're making early payments on it. But I want to make sure that we can have a policy in place so that this policy be, can be consistent until the principal is paid off. Because eventually, the question is going to come up, why don't we have money to buy equipment to make sure the police officers, the firefighters, the public safety workers are in place? We're using all of our money basically to pay off these unfunded liabilities. So if you could help us to develop a policy. Now, the policy of Flagstaff that you alluded to as being the pension obligation funds, I, as one individual of this council, do not support at all. That, for me, is not a viable solution for the City of Nogales. I don't want to create any more debt, but I do want to make sure that we did pay it off. I forgot to ask our city attorney, he was supposed to give us a presentation on what is the penalty if we don't pay this off at 2037?
Oh, it's a simple answer. The statute doesn't create any penalties right now. The statute says that you have to adopt a policy, you have to assume assets and liabilities, and work through it so that the unfunded liability is funded essentially. While the statute currently doesn't have penalties, you know, this legislature is always in session, and penalties could arise in the future, including possibly encumbering our state share revenues if we don't do things properly. I mean, that seems to me the logical way of hitting us if we don't do what we're supposed to be doing.
Thank you, Mr. Massey. And I concur with your comments, Mr. Vazquez. And to build up, Mr. Vazquez, on Mr. Massey's comments, the rating linkage to Nogales, it says, "Nogales general creditworthiness is constrained by its local economy and retirement liabilities." So based on what Mr. Massey has says, what the S and P Global Ratings have indicated in their summary, on the two former and latter comments that I made, we need to develop a policy, but that is not going to choke us to death. In other words, we know we have to pay it, but we, we also need to make sure that we can provide food for the family to eat. So I am looking for you to help us to give us some kind of proposals and policies where we can set some money aside without hampering ourselves, constraining ourselves into more debt. I don't know if it's possible, but I just want to share how I feel, because I, it not only affects our creditworthiness in the future, which the city may need, especially if we're looking to continue with projects with water and sewer, and the basic improvements of our infrastructure, we have to have something there. But then, on the other side of it, Mr. Vazquez, I don't want our employees to feel frustrated that we can't consider raises, we can't consider equipment, we can't consider improvements to our maintenance, we can't consider the personal infrastructure of our facilities, because we're so choked down financially on a yearly basis, that it's all going to our creditworthiness in general. So that's what I'm looking for you guys to help us. Some balance there, where Mr. Kissinger says, well, Ali, I'll have some money, so I, I can allocate this for improvements, but then we also have some money to help improve our creditworthiness until we resolve this, this due dead in 2037. I, I hope I made myself reasonably clear to you, Mr. Vazquez.
You certainly did, Mr. or Councilmember, right on that. And if I may respond on just a couple of bullet points?
Yes, sir.
So in, in short, I, I hear everything that you're saying. And I, I understand your, your, your wanting to look to the future and say, well, how do we fix this, what can we do? And the City of Nogales, quite frankly, has done just about everything that it can given it's going to grow, and, you know, so many travels out of the act. And I mean, you've done it consistently. And I've been surprised and pleasantly, by the end of the day, it comes down to the lease, you know, the subscription.
Yeah.
In, in order, in order to handle the things that you have on your plate today, but also those things coming, you know, from the future, the capital, you know, infrastructure, which you mentioned, you know, the number of times. So I, I guess what I would say is that, you know, you can only expect so much from your excise tax revenue, and maybe there's time to look, and I know nobody really wants to consider this at this part, but perhaps it's time to consider a, a primary property tax to, to help you, in, in the sense to help balance out if, if just, except the property you consider, and a primary property tax to not lose that much.
No, I, I understand that, Mr. Vazquez, and thank you for your financial prudence and straightforwardness to us. But is there something that you could help us right now, so that we can develop a policy that can give an outlook of what we want to do, at least, so we can have something in place to work off of?
I will work with Mr. Kissinger and Ms. Walker and whatever, when they want to do it.
Okay. And maybe, Ms. Walker, did you want to say something?
Yes, I just wanted to speak up. I have developed with many communities in Arizona, reserve policies that have indicators that tie to how much money's coming in, what one-time money you have coming in, and at different levels, how much you can set aside. You could put designated reserves, again, they're not as strong as something that's restricted reserves, but put aside and have a policy to talk about if your revenues exceed a certain amount, or your one-time revenues do, because ongoing revenues, you want to be able to put towards personnel raises, all the things you were talking about, one-time is more for capital. But to try to achieve some balances with your public, with unfunded liability, so the council has the choice on whether or not they want to use it to pay that debt off, or they want to just keep it in a reserve, or they're just going to use it this one year because of factors. But I think that there's a way I can work with Mr. Kissinger and Michael, use some examples of some other financial policies that have been adopted in other communities in Arizona, and we can probably get something in front of you.
Mrs. Walker, that, your verbiage there really capsulized the, the comments that I was making. If you could work with Mr. Kissinger on that, and maybe next month, make, make a presentation to us, because I just, I don't want to get into any debt. But I have to be careful with, that we have some monies available, and I think that what you're offering there between you, Mr. Vazquez, and Mr. Kissinger, you could come up with a policy for us, that what we have available, we can use to pay it. Because I do want to have you continue with a prepayment for the unfunded liability every year, because that helps to reduce that balance too. Is that correct, Mrs. Walker?
If you do, and that's what we presented today. Today's numbers, it may not make sense to give the check to PSPRS at this point, because you might earn more by keeping it.
Right.
But you have reserved it. And that's kind of part of the policy, you reserve it for that purpose, and you're not going to go out and spend it for anything else at this point, it's a policy decision. And, but at this point, it doesn't make sense to write a check yet to PSPRS, it makes more sense to invest it, but that may change six months from now. And you've got the flexibility then, six months from now, to say, okay, the market's turned around, it makes more sense for us to pay that money and write a check to PSPRS. And those are the factors you can consider in policy.
And, and that's what, if we... And, and that's what, if we could just help us to develop a policy that takes in those external factors, financial external factors, so that the mayor and council can make a sound decision for our community and at the same time for our employees.
I agree.
Do you concur, Mr. Vazquez?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I was on mute.
Okay, then we're okay, Mr. Kiss, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think if we put this for, for next week, they can come with policies and we can hash this out.
Next month?
Next month.
Next month, I'm sorry. Did I say next week?
Yes.
Next month. I'm sorry. I think that would be good. I think we're all in line how we wanted to go, what we've discussed.
Can I, Mayor, members of the council? I just want to throw this out there. I, I know you want it next month, but we've got auditors who are going to be there for, for the next two weeks with us and answer those questions as well as the day-to-day. So if by chance we don't get it done in this next month, I would ask the council, consider the following month to be presented in the event that we just get too caught up with audit issues resolved.
Mr., Mrs. Walker, we always leave that up to the city manager to take care of.
We'll work that through, Pat.
Okay, thank you. I still want to make a promise that I couldn't keep.
Mr. Mayor, I concur.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, is there any other question for?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, so, Pat and Michael, thank you very much for your presentation. I'm going to go ahead and sign off on the, on the Zoom meeting. Pat, if you, if you wish to join us on Hangouts, we're, we're on the Hangouts.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you. Say, when, John?
I win, Mayor. Win, Mayor.
Perfect. Number two, report and update Chase Bank building.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
This, this was an item that was asked by Vice Mayor Boharcus, asked me to put this on the, on the agenda. I, I produced a memorandum to mayor and council explaining where we're at in, in general on the, on the Chase Bank building. I don't know if you all had a chance to, to read through the report. But if you have, I, I'm open to, to answer any questions anyone might have up this report, Mr. Mayor. Okay, Vice Mayor, you have anything?
No, I, I've got the information that I wanted. The only thing is, I don't see any dates that I do have any estimate, estimate dates on when all this is going to?
When it's going to happen?
Uh huh.
I, I don't, right now, uh, we're waiting for some square footage numbers to come for, for Judge Cartwright to review to make sure that just appropriate space and, and appropriate part of the design concept. For Mr. Buena to get to. Once we do get those, we'll, we'll look at those design concepts, make sure that it's going to fit our needs. We will share them with mayor and council. We'll get the final approval on them. And then we'll ask Mr. Buena to move on to the second phase of, of his contract, which will be actually engineering, the approved conceptual design. I can tell you that we engaged in, I believe in March. Right, in March is when we, when the design committee got together and we engaged Mr. Buena. And unfortunately, right around March is when we got the bad news of the whole COVID issue. And so we slowed down. We put out a memorandum saying we're stocking all expenditures, all activity. And so we pulled back a little bit on our activity over there. But I can tell you that recently we are back in, engaged on, on moving forward to try to come up with some type of design for the Chase Bank. I can tell you that in this year's budget, there is no budgeting money for Chase Bank. So even while we did come up with a design concept with, with construction costs, we don't, I don't have a budget authority to engage a contractor to start building. I, I can tell you that right now. It doesn't mean that we, that we would have to make some type of budget adjustment and come back to your council.
Okay, I, I was going to ask that, is the funding still available? Are we going to lose any funding on this?
So all the funding for the Chase Bank, Mr. Vice Mayor, is coming out of our general fund. There's no magic fund out there. There's no grant funding available to, to do this bank. It's just general fund money, funding. So there is funds in our, our contingency reserve and what have you. We do have funding in the city, but none of it has been identified in our budget for the Chase Bank.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the report.
Thank you, John.
Hello?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. Number three, city manager report on recruitment. I put, I placed this on the, the agenda. John, can you kind of give us an idea of where we're at with, with? But actually with, I know, I know you have, haven't had the luck on it, that you guys have been working hard, you and, and human resources on this.
So, Mr. Mayor, we, we met with, we met with you on two occasions with our human resources to talk about the council's process on selecting a new city manager. I, I'm not taking charge of that. I think that's all your decision. When you guys gave me a direction, we moved forward on it. But we, we did bring to you, Mr. Mayor, the, and we did in the last meeting, I believe, the list from, from, uh,
The existing list we have, yes.
Previous one. We made some contacts with some of the applicants. Some were, I think, one was still interested, but it was, it was one that was rejected by, by this body as, as an applicant. And there are no other applicants on that list. Mr. Mayor, uh, uh, short of, 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 uh, of Mr. Seto, that have a city or county experience to, to bring forth. So we, we wait for you to give up, give me direction if you want to re-advertise, how you want to move forward on this. And then additionally, I had a conversation with councilman, uh, Han Lencian. Uh, and Councilman Han Lencian had took the initiative to reach out to, uh, to IPM, IP, IPN. And I passed out that letter, uh, uh, that Mr. Han Lencian had from the print and, and, and I pass out to you. This is an interim public management, uh, a company. They, they could give you an interim city manager, finance director, city attorney, a whole list of upper management. And typically what they do, and, and I get emails from these people all the time saying if I'm interested to put my name in the hat. Of course, I'm committed to work here. But Mr. Han Lencian had a conversation with the owner of this company. And I'll let, I'll turn it over to Mr. Han Lencian, if you don't mind.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Yeah, you know, we were, again, we keep looking for people for a city manager position. And just talking to the different people from different cities, they all seem to mention this IPM, right? Which is interim public management. And, and they were all seemed to be very, very happy with him. And this included Douglas and, and Flagstaff, Tucson, and Phoenix. So, so I, I decided to give him a call and, and, you know, read up on him. And the reviews that I got from him were all excellent. And then his deal is, like he says, he can have three, three confidential interim resumes to us within fifteen days. If we, if we agree to go ahead and sign up with him, they can have three different people applying for us. And I think within another fifteen days, have actual face-to-face meetings with them, right? The actual interview, and then we would, we could decide on what we, what we wanted to do. And again, they have people there that, for a financial, for interim financial director or city manager. And I think if we decide to look at it, at the city manager, and again, it gives us enough time to legitimately find who we want. Because I, it's very, very tough, I think, in thirty days or sixty days or ninety days to find who we're looking for. So this is, this is a solution that a lot of cities have used.
Sir, Han Lencian, but would this be local in the state of Arizona? That they would be searching for them or?
No, no, they, they have already a pool. Like John said, they've, they've asked him if he wants to join the pool. They have a pool of, of ex-city managers.
But, and in Arizona, Arizona's?
Well, in, in, in Arizona, basically, because the, the people are going to be living here. We can specify that we want, you know, managers from here. I, 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 my, my, when my conversation with him is that we were looking for ex-city managers, right? Somebody that, that was involved. We can specify again. You know, I, I did mention the fact that Nogales is, you know, is a border community and a lot of people speak Spanish. So it would be nice if they spoke English and Spanish.
Yeah.
Right? That, that was, that was one, one of the deals. But we could also specify that we're looking for a, a city manager that has been a city manager in the state of Arizona. And, and again, we can sign a contract with them for, for ninety days or six months. Said, normally everybody goes for six months. That gives you enough time to go ahead and get what you need to be done, right? And the contract is directly with IPM. So it eliminates, you know, severance pays, eliminates a lot of different things, right, that, that we would have to go ahead and contract with them. But at least it would give us enough time. We would have a city manager on, on, on the city premises. And, and we can basically pretty much say what we're looking for. And it would be here and we would have somebody, and them themselves, I think, would go ahead and, and entice other people thinking about being city managers to go ahead and apply, right? We just need the word out there. And, and somebody like this, talking to ex-city managers, would, would help us, I think, tremendously. And I think, like I said, everybody that has gotten a city manager has been very happy. In fact, the city of Douglas, they, they had a lady there. She came in, IPM got it for them. They signed a six-month deal with them. And after six months, they decided they wanted her stay and they gave her a two-year contract, right? And I'm not saying that's what we're looking for, but at least it would give us six months to go ahead, have a city manager here. And then we can go ahead and, and with something else, go ahead and look for a legit city manager.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you. If I recall right, at the last meeting, we had agreed upon that you wanted to do interviews within three weeks. And we had agreed upon that we would direct the city manager to notify the ones that were in the second tier that will reject, and we would interview those individuals. If Mr., if I interpret Mr. Kissinger's statement right now, he said that he had one person that said yes to the request. So my question is, Mayor, we agreed on what we wanted to do. It was done. I thought we were going to do that within three weeks and nothing happened. It was changed. Now, what Councilman Han Lencian is alluding to, I have used the city of Douglas several times on this example. You didn't need to do this, Councilman Han Lencian, to go around. All you had to do at the last meeting was say, I brought it up several times, let's do that. And then we could have come up with, with some kind of agreement. Because I use as a, the city of Douglas as an example of that, because I've looked into it. And, and I, I concur with the, the premise that you're saying, Councilman Han Lencian. But I, I don't agree with you because I feel like you're trying to do an end around on what we agreed the last time. If, if we're going to change it, then we all have to be involved in the decision and say, okay, let's change it, let's see. But at the last meeting, we agreed upon a, a premise, and now it's being changed. I didn't have a say on why we're going to change it like this. I mean, if you would have brought this up at the last time and there was opportunity to do it, well, maybe there would have been people that supported you instead of doing what we agreed to. Then, fine. You have to go with what the majority of the council wants to do, whether I agree or disagree. But I, 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 I just feel, Councilman Han Lencian, that, that here again, we agreed on a premise. And I don't know if it's because you don't like the individual that's going to be interviewed or that? Or, or why, why is all of a sudden this, this is being brought up? I just feel that everything we agreed upon, so what are we agreeing upon for, if it's going to be changed like that?
But, yeah, just one thing. The thing is that I don't want to interview just one.
Yeah.
Well, you know.
That's why, that's why I wanted to go with the list that was there, and none of them in the, on the list. So we have only one person that we're going to interview, you know, uh, I mean, we should have at least a good chance to find a selection to figure out.
And you know what, Mayor?
Yeah.
I agree with that, Mayor, but the only thing I'm saying is, I agree with you and I agree with the Councilman Han Lencian. But all I'm saying is, we agreed on a premise. If you would have said that there was only, if there's only one, I don't want to do it. But nobody said that. We said that we agreed upon him calling him up and whoever was available, we would interview. That was the agreement that we all made here. Now, if you would have said if there's only one, then I don't want to do it. I would have agreed with that, okay? But that's not what we agreed upon. We agreed upon something. We should have followed through on it. Then if we're not happy with the results of the interview, then fine, let's bring up something else that we want to do. But I, you know, what are we agreeing upon if somebody outside the, these doors here, decisions are being made? That's the only thing I'm saying.
Well, I'm not making any decisions outside the door, but I don't want to just interview just one person. I was hoping that from the list that we had, when I talked to John and to the human resources director, that we would have three or four from the state of Arizona. We had, and we saw some from, uh, I think it was Gilbert and, and some others, and, and it just didn't pan out. So, you know, I, I want to have a selection. I just don't want to interview just one person. I want to have at least two or three of them to say, you know, which one, this is, look what happened last time. We interviewed one. And then we all decided, yeah, go ahead, bring him in.
Well, but we all, but we all, but we all agreed that he was the better person. We just had some conversation.
Well, we, we did have three people. We had three people on the list last time and two of them bailed out right before.
And one was from Nogales.
And, and, you know, he's not, he, well, actually, he's from, he's from Nogales, but lives in Phoenix. But, but the thing is that, you know, my concern is that local from the state of Arizona that's, that know, hey, I know Nogales. I, and, and preferably if they're bilingual, but I, I don't have any problem with interviewing that one person. But I do want to have at least a good chance of a selection to, to make my, my decision. Because, you know, if I'm just going to interview one person and, and, and I don't know what will happen after the interview, you know, how successful that person's going to be with the interview, then, then we're just going to have to go another direction.
That's what happened. That's true.
Yeah, yeah, that could have, it easily could have. But, yeah, Councilman Diaz, you were going to say something?
If I recall, I, I was the one that suggested we do three or four applicants for transparency and whatever. But, but I did suggest we do three or four applicants.
One thing that we unanimously agreed, I remember that, that we wanted local. And we didn't say Nogales local. We said the state of Arizona. And, and, you know, we have to, let's be a little bit, let's be open-minded and say, okay, are we going to have two or three? You know, we've been at it for three weeks. We, we, we didn't come across anything. And, and it's too bad that these people that, that were on the list, you know, and, and there's some of them, they're on the list, but they don't have any city manager experience. They just have, you know, manager experience, but not municipal or colony. And I'm not saying that, that the person that is on the list right now doesn't have experience. Of course he has experience. But I would have, I would like to have a little bit more, something to decide on. I'm going to have at least two or three. Well, our, you know.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I was, I was also under the impression as, as because of what Mr. Diaz said, or Councilman Diaz, that we were going to be interviewing three or four people, preferably even five or six people, right? Preferably even five or six people, right? So my, my opinion was, we did that already, where we had one person to pick from and we picked, because that's what we had. So we decided to do that. But I was under the impression that we were gonna be looking at minimum, three or four people, maybe five or six. And we're, we're not getting that. So, uh, and, uh, Councilman Varona, if I had thought about this at the time, and I, I sure might, maybe you did bring, did you bring this up or not?
Not that company, I just brought up the example, cause I know what Douglas did. I don't remember the company.
Well, I, I knew about it too at the time, but at the time I just, maybe lapse of memory on the deal and didn't bring it up. But I kept it in mind, I kept this in mind and, and many people have discussed that deal with Douglas. So that's why I went ahead and gave him a call and I was rather very, very impressed. And, uh, and, uh, and he, you know, talk, like I says, I, I did make a call to, to different cities and I asked them if they had ever used them. And they all said, yes. They've used them for many things, including engineers.
We just see that a while back, the first time around.
Yes.
Well, a lot, most of these people, more than ninety percent of them are retired.
Yes, well, that, that's a good thing, because they're not looking for a long-term deal. They're, they're looking for a six-month deal and give us enough time to go ahead and be able to find somebody, or at least find four or five or six people that are applying. Like they said, the company itself will go ahead and spread the word. The people that come down will spread the word, right? And that's basically the best deal, because they, they, they come from different cities. And again, like the mayor said, hopefully from Arizona. And we can stipulate that, we can stipulate, we want them to be basically bilingual and from the state of Arizona, having been city manager somewhere here. And he says, they, we can give them a list of what we want and that's what they would be looking for. And he says at any one time, they have two hundred and fifty people that they're gonna be picking from. Not all city managers, but different, in different categories for directors.
Well, here again, I'm not, Mr. Massey. Here again, we're, we're talking, but there's nothing that we can do tonight, can't we?
It's not agenda as an action item.
That's what I've always said, when you guys put something on the agenda, put discussion and possible action. You didn't do it. So now we can't, we have to wait for another meeting now.
Again, the question is, can the mayor decide to go ahead and, and?
Only the council can do that as a group. Only the council as a group. The city manager works for seven of us.
Yeah, but, but in the, in the mayor's position.
Can't do it, cause you're binding the city.
Or, Mr. Massey, can't, can't the mayor go ahead and just say, we'll, you know, we're, we have to, we have to go ahead and, uh, and speak to the, uh, to the people that we're gonna hire? So we're not actually doing any hiring, we're just gonna go ahead and agree.
We're, we're committing some amount of city monies though, right? Was that fifteen hundred dollars?
Fifteen hundred dollars.
Does the mayor have that in his budget? Do you have discretionary fifteen hundred dollars, Mayor?
Of course I do, I've got tons of money. No, no, but this is the thing. This is the thing. With the process that Mr. Hennasian has, if we were to get two or three people and then also invite, uh, a person from Nogales to be part of the interview process, can that be done?
Well, that can be, if.
So that we can have at least two or three to say.
That won't be considered council action tonight. And if, if the mayor went, went ahead and set that process rolling, I think it, it would be subject to another council, uh, agenda. If council wanted to, uh, put it on as an action, I, if you, the council might decide that that's not satisfactory. So you'd be taking a risk in that way, but I don't see anything that says you can't do it. Subject to council desire. And that's what this discussion is about, I guess, is to sense what the desire of council is.
We could be in a position too, that if we, if, if I would have placed there, you know, discussion, possible action on this. And then we would have come up with what Councilman Varona wants. And then we would have voted and, and, and the vote wouldn't have been there for that. It would have been the same thing. It would have gone in a different direction, going in, in his direction. You know, I, I got this from Mr. Hennasian today, okay? And if I would have known about this before, I would have probably done something about it. Uh, even though this agenda was amended yesterday. But, um, I wanted to discuss this, because I know what Councilman Varona is talking about. Cause I too wanted to have, uh, I was hoping that from the list that we have, we could have had some people to interview. But if I'm just gonna have one, I'd, I, I don't, you know, I know it's the, the whole council makes the decision on this. But I, I don't think we should just, uh, interview one person, I think we should interview a couple. Just have a, just have a selection list.
Well, Mr. Mayor, maybe we can just have a meeting.
Cause I know how.
Again, here, when, when, on the contract with them, for a period of thirty days after signing this letter and returning it to IPM, you agree that the city will use IPM exclusively for this search, for the interim, right? If, if we, if we talk to whoever they send us and we don't agree, we don't want any of them, then, then we start another search, right? But at least, at least we have an idea what's out there if they send us three, four or five people. We have a very good idea what we could basically get. Even if they're retired, right? They, they can even give us an idea of what we can end up with.
John, did, uh, the Human Resources Director have anything else, uh, that in mind that she could, besides going out and advertising?
So, Ms. Mayor, the, uh, a, as your conversation goes forward, it appears that the council wants to act as the council to give staff direction. And, and staff is totally on board with that. What we can do, what we can do as staff is accommodate your desires. If you wanna, if you want us to advertise, you can go out and advertise. If you don't want us to advertise, we don't have to go out and advertise.
What, what it was last time is to go off the list that we had.
Yes, but, but the, but during the, during the conversation, right? There was conversation, yeah, let's go off the list and there was very, there was a lot of conversation going on, right? We only want somebody that has city council experience. We only want somebody who's from Nogales. We only want, so staff, what we did is we brought you, Mr. Mayor, and said, here's the list. How would you like to proceed? You want us to give copy to all mayor, to all the, the council members? How do you want staff to proceed for your selection? Staff doesn't want to step on your, your, uh, decision-making, uh, ability. You guys can make whatever decision you want to do. If you wanna go with, that's why, when, when Mr. Hennasian talked to me about this, I said, Mr. Hennasian, you call. I can't call, I can't, I can't interject myself, I'm not a council member. I'm not making decisions on, on, on who my boss is gonna be, right? And who you all are gonna s- s- select. So, long story short, Mr. Mayor, the only thing that we have as far as city council member, um, and city manager applicants, is the list that you had prior. We still have that list, we can provide it to all of you. If you all want us to tell us what to do with that list, we're more than willing. But we would need you to tell me, check this guy, this guy, this guy, and this guy, and see if they're available for me. Or you can tell me, check the entire, and it was huge, that list, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, but.
You know, so somebody needs to make a decision on what you all wanna do. You, you could as a group, select the mayor, said, we've done that before. We put our, 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 our decision into the mayor, he can give staff direction kind of before. We can do that.
But I, we looked at the list the other day, John. And then, then Carmen said that those people were not interested.
The, the.
The ones that were from Arizona.
Right.
The ones from Arizona.
And already gotten jobs.
They already got a job, see, so, so.
And the one that you rejected.
Yeah, and so what we were hoping, I was hoping when we discussed this last month, that, that we had an opportunity, there was a window there, an opportunity, and this, had some people coming in and being interviewed. You know, so, but, you know, so where do we take it from here?
Well, I think the fairest way to do it, Mayor, I, I just, I just wanna make it known that I, I, I don't, I don't like, that we come to agreement, uh, the last meeting. And interim, things would change without coming here and discussing it before anything was done. And you were right to stay out of it. Um, I think the best thing to do right now, my recommendation would be, is that we have a special meeting to discuss it, so that we can take a vote, see how everybody feels. So everybody had, take a vote, but right now, I would say that.
All right, let's put it this way, can we do it on next Wednesday's?
Yeah, right there.
Yeah, next Wednesday would be perfect.
We have a housing meeting next week, okay? And we'll, we'll make a decision there and, and like Councilman Varona says, so we can come up and we can have something that we can discuss. Because I hear different things and I understand, and, and I know how Councilman Varona feels, because I'm the one that said those words. And, and I remember I told you that I wanted, I didn't wanna go with this too long, I wanted to do something as fast as possible, but as professional as possible too. So, so, let's do that.
The only thing is, if you could do some research, Mr. Kissinger, uh, just to make sure that they're going to submit some confidential, but if we're going to interview, which I think we're going to do.
Yes.
That the, the person that told you yes, here locally of the previous list, that the search committee can exclude him, we're going to interview that individual.
No, 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 yes, yes, it's understandable, yes.
The thing is, he would be interviewed as an interim?
Well, that's up to him to decide. If we want, if we say it's for interim for so much, then he can make the decision if he wants to or not. He might say, hey, I, I'm not interested in it, that's his decision.
The thing is that when you interview somebody for city manager, those are the questions you ask the person that's sitting there. Are you willing to be interim? Are you willing to, you know, uh, uh, you know, you can ask a lot of questions. You know, even though it says up to two years, it doesn't mean it's two years. But I mean, uh, uh, and, and at that time, if the person wants to, they accept it, yes.
This is my understanding, and, and, because, sorry to give you some direction, I just want to make it clear. If we engage, my understanding, if we engage IPM in providing us with an interim city manager, that's what we're doing. They're going to send you some names, right? So you can discuss amongst yourselves which one to pick. But it's exclusive to them, because we don't even hire the city manager, we pay IPMA.
They make, that's how they make their money.
It's not exclusive, that's what it is. So, that's how that works. I don't think that I, the, the way, if you wanna have one of your candidates that's on the list to be considered in the contract with IPMA, we would have to encourage that candidate to.
Be on the list.
To get on the list. That's the way, that's what I'm understanding you're asking me to do, or I don't, you know, you have to be very clear, because I don't wanna mess this up, this is your decision. You all let me know exactly what you wanna do. Or you can have a discussion next Wednesday and then tell me from there what you wanna do. I, I'm good either way, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. It's basically just notifying IPM that, you know, uh, there is one other person and they won't have the exclusivity. And have them accept, uh, giving you the name.
Can you work that out, John?
Okay, so, I, I, I can call this company tomorrow, tomorrow morning. I could ask them, the city's interested in engaging you and, and finding us an interim city manager to help us out. But the city council would also like to consider, tell me, that's, that's what I want, I wanna make sure I'm saying it right. The city council would also like to interview.
A former applicant.
A, a, a different candidate, that's not associated poss- possibly with you. For a permanent position, an interim position, talk to me. That's what I wanted to be able to articulate to them.
We don't know, it could be an, an interim or a permanent position.
Yes, go ahead, Councilman.
I have a question, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna read a paragraph from IPM's agreement here, uh, which if we get IPM and then we have a local, just, you know, what we're talking about. It says, IPM, if we take your fee for the above services, it's fifteen hundred dollars payable by the city on a net ten-day payment terms, which will be credited to the city should you choose an IPM associate for interim services. For a period of thirty days after signing this letter and returning it to IPM, you agree that the city will use IPM exclusively for the search. So.
So that, that's the discussion, is that we're going to modify their proposal. We'll, we'll, we'll respond and attempt to modify that.
But, but we have to pay a fifteen hundred dollar retainer, right?
Right, right.
Well, you have to talk to them first to see if they accept that, before you give them a retainer or anything.
Let's go, we'll do it ourselves, we'll do it ourselves.
Or, or, or again, if we're gonna, if we're looking for an interim, if we get an interim, the person that, that wants to apply here locally, after we get through and, and, and we get a list of complete people that wanna apply for, for a permanent city manager position, he can be on the, on top of the list to be interviewed, right? I mean, cause what we're looking for right now is just giving us time to find a permanent, uh, uh, city manager, right? And that's what, this is what, we can go with ninety, uh, ninety days or we can go with, with six months. But at least it gives us the time to go ahead and, and see what we can, what we can get, right? And I think going through them, I think we will get five or six people that will apply for, for a permanent city manager's position, right?
Because they, they don't send.
I think it's, it's rough to say, this people will be interim and this people will be permanent if we, if we're interviewing.
I didn't read through the whole thing, but they don't send people for us to interview.
Yes.
So what is the problem that they send people to interview and then we still select the one from here to be part of the interview process that day? Can that be done?
Well, the, the, the problem, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Massey, is the reason they say that is because they get a percentage of the salary off of their check.
Can't you select that person?
That's right, they, that's how they.
They're doing all this for, for.
We do that with our teachers and all of that, then there's a company for the teachers and all of that. That's how they make their, they don't make their money on the fifteen hundred dollars.
No, when the fifteen hundred dollars gets credited.
Cause the person, they sign a contract with them, you gotta pay us so much, cause we got you this job, you know?
Okay, let's, let's not take this any further, because we're coming back with this on Wednesday next week.
One more question.
Yes.
Real quick, real quick question, how much do we have to pay an interim city manager per month?
I don't know, we have to ask them.
That, I asked the same, the same question and he said, it depends on which, which person we would be using as interim. And, uh, there's different, some of them want more, some of them want less. So at the time, they would, they would tell us, when, when we interview them, they tell us, this guy wants so much, this guy wants so much, this guy wants so much. They're not gonna be the same amount, right? I mean, you might get somebody there that was city manager of, uh, of Scottsdale, let's just say, as a comment. Obviously, there's gonna be a price for that and somebody was a, a, a city manager of, of a, another city in Arizona, which you would figure would be less money. So, I, you know, I, the same question I asked. But again, I, I keep saying, we're basically talking about two different things here. One is an interim and one would be a permanent, right? So I think, I think.
Well, the interim could be permanent, yeah.
Like at Douglas.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the.
If time is up and then you could ask and see if they accept.
The question to the people there when we interview them is, would you be willing to, after three, nine, ninety days or six months, would you be willing to consider being a permanent or not? Then at least you have someone though, there that might apply, right? Uh, my opinion is, most of them would, would say no, they're interested in doing it for, for six months. They're not interested in doing it for two years. Uh, it just happened that the one in Douglas decided that they did and I, I'm sure they've had others that have decided to do it too.
But remember, we also have a salary bracket. You know, you can't come in and say, I'll be here for six months, but I want two hundred thousand dollars on my, two hundred thousand.
No, well, that obviously, obviously.
Outrageous number.
When, when, when he calls and says, I've got the three or the five people that are willing to interview, then it's a question of, you know, what are we discussing? Or, John, maybe he can give you a more specific, uh, figure as to what he's looking at, right? At least to give us an idea from somewhere to, to, from a, from a low to a high, right?
Okay, let's do that and then, John, can you have something for us for Wednesday?
Here's what I can have for you on Wednesday, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, John.
I'll have you the answer to your question from IPM.
Yeah.
Whether they, you can consider an outside applicant during this process.
Okay.
And, and report back to you all on Wednesday, if that's what you wish. That'll be item number one on, on the special meeting on Wednesday.
And that'll be the only thing of the item.
But what did they say? You know, and I can report back to you. Now, from there, it's again, it'll be up to Mayor and Council to give staff direction, what you want to do.
What direction, everybody? Okay, John? Okay, yes. It'll be after the, the housing. Huh? How was that?
My car hung the housing down.
Why, is this supposed to, is this meeting not be long?
You've got a lot of things changing. But I mean, it can be taken.
It all depends on tax.
Okay, let's, let's move on. Uh, number four, report on one-time temporary reduction in the water and sewer connection fees. Costas Marona? Costas Marona, I'm losing, use myself first.
Yes. I just got this. This paper, John, why don't you take it from me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So, as, as y'all are aware, we, we went to and we modified our ordinance to give up one-time only, uh, fifty percent discount to encourage development of the city of Dallas for a period of ninety days on our water and sewer connection fees. Uh, that is ongoing, uh, as we speak. Uh, it expires on October sixth unless, uh, I don't even know if Mayor and Council could redo it or not, but it's also probably written one time, so I don't know what that means. Mike can probably answer that question. But my report to you is two people have taken advantage of the water, uh, um, the, the water, uh, connection fees in this period of time. Uh, one, one of the persons located at ten fifty-nine North Bayes Avenue and the other one's located at six sixty-one West First Street. Um, they were, uh, they were able to, uh, see that fifty percent reduction in, in their, uh, water connection fees. On sewer, four people were able to take advantage of this so far. Uh, it was at sixteen twenty-one West Artley Drive, one thousand West White Park Drive.
One hundred.
One hundred, I'm sorry, did I say one thousand? Sorry. Uh, six hundred and sixty-one West First Street, uh, that's the same one as, uh, it's up on the top there, and two thirteen North Grand Avenue. Uh, I can tell you that there was some confusion in our, uh, P and Z, uh, whether one time means you can only do it one time for sewer or one time for water when, when they first wrote the ordinance. Uh, but after getting clarification from Mr. Massey, no, the program is one time, not that you can only get one or the other discount. So, having that said, um, the sewer ones were charged full price. So we, after we discovered this, we are refunding the amount of, of, of the fifty percent back to each of the one in the sewer. So the city will be making a check and refunding it right back to those applicants. Mr. Vice Mayor, I hope that, uh, that serves as all the questions that, that Mr. Marona might have on this before.
Let's make one question. Uh, Mr. Kissinger, I, I had a question. Um, if, if, uh, people are are developing, you know, or have existing, existing, uh, water meters and they have it, they haven't, uh, if they want to change them to new ones, are they still getting the discount?
Talk to me a little bit about what you
An existing apartment building.
So you have a, a water account already, you have a meter.
And, and they want to put two, two other meters for two other apartments?
They want to develop two.
Uh-huh.
This, this would apply to
Would that apply?
If they do it and, and they pay for it, uh, prior to October sixth.
Okay. I, I had that question raised in here.
So the one time doesn't mean one per individual?
Uh-huh.
A, a person could own, could be building ten apartments and, or, or ten houses, let's say. And he went to apply before October sixth for ten different meters and pay for them, he could receive it, but you can't, you can't, uh, beg that you don't have it.
Okay.
But you don't, you just don't apply, you have to have plans, you have to have
Absolutely.
You have to submit the works.
You can't apply for a fifty percent discount on a water meter for a project you don't do two years from now. It, it, it's an approved plan installation meter.
Yes. Because otherwise you're gonna have somebody, somebody I know is gonna apply for for everything for the rest of their life.
And then settle.
And then settle.
Can we have a, a report in October?
Absolutely.
Please, actually, did this encourage, does these people give the, the new service with the reduction, with the kind of pushing to, to develop the property or? I don't know, it's hard to say.
Um, Mr., Mr., Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, yes, I'll, I'll let the documents report out. I, I don't know their mode, I don't know if there's a plan already in place and they just took advantage of it. But we, so far we've had, uh, four, five, six different who have taken advantage of it. We're not overwhelmed with, uh, background. We were hoping to be overwhelmed, so that's why I'll just let the
But this is better than past, past month's or, yeah, past year, maybe?
Well, Mr. Mayor, we didn't have this program, so I can't compare this program to past year.
No, we, we, we had building permanence and buildings being done without this, you know, several.
Make a big difference.
If you look at it
They didn't line up around the block. And, and, and I can tell you that some of these were already
They're waiting, processing.
I think though, the problem was though, it was called to my attention that we didn't include the construction cost weight. There's a construction cost weight. I think if we would have included that, we would have had a lot more people take advantage of it. But I told them, hey, it already, the boat left, I'm not going back. So, that's it.
We're done?
Yes, sir.
Since January of last year, when I came into office, this is the first time I see Mr. Hanusian's name on one of the agenda items.
I thought you just saw it on the other one.
Can I be excused, Mr. Mayor?
Are you leaving?
Can I get? Can I get thirty seconds, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, sir.
Where are you going, John?
Thirty seconds. Oh, yeah. We can go without him. Number five, discussion on water billing process. And I guess you need John for that?
No, no, John can go. But, uh, the, the question here is, I guess it's kind of twofold. First of all, I think everybody here has gotten, one of our constituents come and talked to us about how their water bill went from a hundred dollars to a thousand dollars and they want to find out what, what the deal is and according to them, they couldn't find a leak and, uh, you know, they looked for this, the city went over there, they couldn't find a leak and yet their bill went from a hundred dollars to a thousand dollars, right? And that has happened, I don't want to say hundreds of times, but it's happened a lot of times. And, uh, and the other one is, when there is a leak, right, if there is a leak, I mean, you know, should the city, and, and I understand, I mean, most people are very sensitive. I am very sensitive. If I'm in my house and I hear water running, I can, I can sense that the water is running and, uh, and I'll go look for where, where the water's running, right? Uh, a lot of people have that sense, but some people don't have it. The water could be running all night and they will never feel that or even sense the idea that the water is running. So, like five years ago, we were talking about new meters for, for the city in O'Gallus and they said they would be read off a tower and that we would eventually get to a satellite and the satellite would, would be giving us a deal. Uh, I, I think the original meters they got couldn't be converted and the company went bankrupt. We ended up buying, I don't know, two hundred meters or three hundred meters and that basically couldn't be used, right? And so I don't know, and John, I don't know where, where we are with the meters. Can they be read? Do, do we have to manually read them or can they be read off a tower or, or off a satellite?
Go ahead. The answer to that question is both. Um, we, we do have meters currently that can be read, uh, off the repeater system. Uh, and we have meters that aren't working off the repeater system. Uh, we're in the process of converting, the goal is to get one hundred percent of our meters, uh, to be read off of the, the radio system. And that's what our goal is right now, but we're not one hundred percent there yet.
And then Mr. Mr. Hanusian, when you left, he was, he was asking that when somebody usually pays, you know, an average of a hundred, a hundred and twenty dollars a month and then all of a sudden, the following month, you get a six hundred, seven hundred, thousand dollar, uh, uh, bill, why isn't that either noticed by the city or why does it always have to be contested by the person when it's outrageous, a thousand dollars from a difference of, you know, from a hundred to a thousand?
Sure.
And that's what he wanted to know because he's had a lot of constituents, you know, asking him that and, and, and I've had some too. And, and sometimes you find a leak and then sometimes there is no leak, it was just a bad reading.
Absolutely. So, uh, it's a very complex question and we assume the case is different. I, I don't have one silver bullet for all of them, but I can give you my example. Uh, my example, last month, I got my city water bill and it was three hundred and fifty dollars. If it's in my water bill, it was one hundred and twenty dollars. Okay, I received the bill, right? I saw the bill, I opened it and almost had a heart attack. But it is what it is, right? And I looked at it and your bill is very, has a lot of information on it. It has your start reading and your end reading, right? You can do the math yourself if you want to, if you don't have to, I can guarantee you that math is done correctly on the numbers that are on that bill. I immediately walked down to my meter as soon as I received that bill. It was two days after the reading was taken, it tells you the date it was read. And I looked at my meter, I took a picture of it. Took a picture of it and I saw, dug down it, that reading is right, okay? That's what, uh, we would do for somebody who doesn't know how to do that. So if somebody got a bill that's three hundred dollars and was fifty, oh, by the way, uh, I wanted to know right away, I called Jose and said, Jose, could you look and see is my meter being read by the radio? Because if it's being read by the radio, the radio sends a reading every two hours, I think? Or something like that, right? So it's communicating every swap. So with that information, I could hopefully determine what that's going on at my house, you know, when is this water being consumed? Because I can figure at my house, between ten o'clock at night and five o'clock in the morning, my consumption should be
Zero.
Zero, because there's nobody moving, right? Unfortunately, my meter's not communicating, right? So I can't get that detailed information. But I know there's a problem, okay? So it's very easy, right? Turned off everything in the house, made sure there's nothing on, no washing machines going on, no sprinkler system going on. I walked down to my meter, took the little box off, looked at it and the little red dial was stopped. Okay? Now I know exactly what's going on because I take the time to figure my stuff out. I know what's going on. I know I have a leak in my sprinkler system, okay? So the next day, that's what I did. I went and looked through all my entire sprinkler system and I hear this all the time from our constituents. Mr. Kissinger, if it's that big of a water leak, you would see a typhoon. I can tell everybody in this council that the way the earth is around the water, you ain't gonna see a end going right down to the water table that quick. There was no typhoon at my house. I didn't see a pond, I didn't see a lake. But I had a one inch tube with a split down the side for two hours a day, every day of the week, right? As soon as that, that solenoid hits that sprinkler system, pumping that water right out there. And Mr. Mayor, as a former public works director, right? You know how much water can go out there.
It does.
I also found out that one of my toilets, right, was filling up too much and it was leaking through that little valve thing there.
Yeah, let's go.
But, but it would stop, eventually it would stop, but it was taking forever to fill up and I said, what the heck? I have to go, I have to fix that. And then I went and modeled those sprinklers, I went in my, uh, my drip system, that's only supposed to put out two gallons, uh, two gallons a minute, two gallons an hour, something like that. It's a drip system, right? The little top came up, there's a water going to the water. So, the point is, right, how does our billing know that? He doesn't know that, right? He gets the reading, the guy who does the reading doesn't go check my house and make sure everything's okay. He does the reading. Give it to Angel, Angel produces a bill, okay? Angel could see, hey, wow, John means double the amount of water, right? So what does Angel do? Sends me the bill, right? It, it's, now the client, me, I have two choices. I could call Angel, say, I, I don't agree with this bill, your meaning is, your meter is wrong. That's what Nine times out of ten, the person is Your meter is wrong. So what do we do? We can check with Itron, say, no. We're checking on the computer, your, your meeting's right. Or if it's not communicating, they send a technician out to your house, open up the meter, then we call you back and say, no, the meter's right. Then we'll get the, then we'll get the, the, well, if the, the meters, the number is right, then your meter's wrong. Right? It's not registering right. So we have a mechanism for that and we replace the meter, right? And we send that meter off to get tested. If that meter tests correctly, you pay for the test of the meter and you pay your water, right? Because you consumed it.
Yeah.
Uh, if the meter's wrong, we immediately credit you. If the reading is wrong, and there's been wrong reading, readings, Mr. Mayor, we credit you, right? If it's a high bill, like you said, maybe some only gets a hundred dollars, but now they got a five hundred dollar water bill, we don't shut people off. We say, hey, listen, you must have a leak, you know? You need to fix your consumption. You stop your consumption. I, I've guaranteed everybody who comes in and says, my consumption's too much, I go, I can fix that. I can give you a ten dollar a month water bill, easily. All we have to do is this, right? We turn it off. And no water's gonna go to that meter, no problem, right? I, I also can compare it like going to Safeway. If you went to Safeway, right, and you go and you buy a hundred cases of water, right? And it goes through their meter, you put it in your car, you take it home and for some reason, something happens to it and it spills or you run over it with your car. You can't go back to Safeway and say, dude, it's too much money, right? So our cash register is our meter. We don't know what happens to the water after it goes in the meter. However, this city, right? This city goes above and beyond to all of our customers. When they complain about a high water bill, we go over there and we try to help them identify their water leak. We're not responsible to fix it and we're not responsible to make sure that we find it, right? But we do everything possible to help people identify and, and fix their own problem. Much more, I might say, than any other utility you'll find in this, uh, community. If you got an electrical bill, and I've gotten those too, right? Because you forget to turn something off or you leave that thermostat down at seventy-two when you shoot it and it goes while you're on vacation, you get that six hundred dollar electrical bill from Roberto. Right? You gotta pay it, right? That, that you can't, you can't use the excuse, well, I forgot to turn off my air conditioner. Why, why are you billing me? Why didn't you call me first? Why don't, you know? So, i- it's a very tough deal. I, I can tell you, we do our best to try to make sure that we're accurate with our billing and we do our best to help our constituents, make sure that they can maintain their, their, at the, at the best they can. But it's hard to be one hundred percent responsible for it.
John, we used to have a flyer that we would hand out with a, that would show you areas where you would have probably leaks, you know?
Right.
So that you could look for them, you know, a drip in the shower, a, a
Toilet.
Fill valve in the toilet, like you said, on the drip system. See, people don't understand that that goes off with a timer and you're probably not even at home when that's happening.
No, no.
And, 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 uh, you know, and maybe, like you said, right now, maybe telling the people, you know what? Go look at your meter, you know, with a flashlight. you know what, go look at your meter, you know, with a flashlight, at night, and see if it's turning, and then, if it's turning, that means that your, your sprinkler, your drip system or something that's doing it, because that's the time it turns on, and, or, you know, maybe look at a different, do we still have that flyer? Because I know we had that information.
I don't know, Mayor, but I know we send our guys out to do the same thing. There, there was a, a very nice lady who lives in De Salle Ciero, right, who called up and said, I can't believe it, I can no longer afford to pay you eight hundred dollars a month, I can't do it anymore, you have to do something, your meter is messed up, you're charging me too much, the city of Nogales charges way too much for water, but you heard the man say that we're one of the weakest, right? So we went to her house, I went personally, also, and we sat right at her meter, right, and we said, go up there and make sure everything's turned off, come back down here. And she did it. Make sure there's not a, a washing machine running, nope, check all your faucets, nope, go listen to all of your toilets. I did it, there is no water running at my house, cool, come down there. See that meter? See how it's spinning?
Yeah.
Water's going through that meter. Well, where's it going, Mister Kissinger?
Yeah.
I don't know, but I know it's going through that meter. And I go, I can make it stop, watch, no water's going through that meter, right? Watch, water's going, and you could hear the water, shh, go, go through the meter. Well, where's it going?
Yeah.
I, I wish I could tell you, but I don't know. Turned out, it cost her quite a bit of money to figure it out, but turns out, first of all, she has the, the length from the meter to her houses, quarter of a mile maybe, because of, you know, where it has it, and, and she has a pool, you know, and it turns out that underneath the pool, where the auto feed is for the pool, there's a leak. So, well, Mister Kissinger, with all that money, you should, there should be a leak here. I go, man, city of Nogales perks very well, that water goes right down quicker than you could ever think. So, Mister Hernandez, we, we work with it, we work with it every day, I know each and every one of you here have probably called me at one point or a time about, uh, high consumption, and each and one of you, I have told you, I will work the best with our staff to try to help and determine what's going on. Uh, but we don't have, uh, and we can't just say, oh, it's a high bill, we'll forgive you this month, don't worry about paying, because, that's not the
Okay. Well, John, go ahead.
No, that, you know, that, that was, that was one, one deal. Obviously, hopefully, the, the meters have always been correct, right? I've had some people that, that, that they send the plumber up there, they check the whole thing, they do exactly what you said, and they still don't, right? They still don't get it, and the next month, it comes back down at a hundred and thirty bucks. Okay, that's one, but the question is, uh, and this was brought up again five or six years ago, we're going to the, to the towers, we're going to the satellite, we're going to this, it's gonna be on the computer. My question is, the, the people that are being read out of, out of the radio that you're saying, uh, y- on the computer, can it be programmed that once they reach a certain level, i- if, if they're accustomed to paying a hundred and thirty dollars for water, and the, and it reaches two hundred and sixty dollars, can the computer be programmed to where they send out a little notice to the city there, and then they give this person a call, right? It's just a courtesy call, but at least, at least it'll save the, it'll save two hundred and sixty dollars worth of water that will continue to go through there, and, and, and the city is doing a service to their, their, the, the people there. I don't know if it's done in Tucson, I don't know if it's done in Phoenix, but my question is, if we're gonna change, and we still have fifty percent of people to go through, can we program it that way?
Sir.
Go ahead.
So I'm, I'm glad you asked that question, because that's one of, I think should be our goal, that if we do go automated, that we look at, 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 uh, software that will allow us to alert customers and have their own portal. I know, uh, Unisource has their own portal.
Right.
Where you can, where you can log on. Unfortunately, Unisource doesn't have the alert, uh, that says if you use over this many watt, kilowatts of electricity, it will send you a text message to let you know, you can, not, not online, I don't know on, on other. It does tell you if, if, uh, there's a loud each, how long it'll take, and all these things, and we're not there yet, um, uh, Mister Hernandez, but I would sure like to get there.
Yeah, well, that-
I would sure like to get there, where each individual customer can log on to a computer and watch their own consumption, you know, I, I, I think that would be great, I think that's a great customer service, but we're not there yet.
Well, let's, let's, hopefully, we can, we can be pushing towards that.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And, and fi- find out from the people that are doing the, the, the radio, uh, billing there, if, if, if that's available or will be available, or, or does other cities have it already or not?
Yes. It's Itron, local.
Mister Hernandez, thank you very much, very informative.
Yeah.
Number six, discussion, possible action on opening of parks and recreation ball fields. Councilman, but not.
Okay, I, and, Mayor, you know, uh, I put this item on the agenda, uh, because I've been getting a lot of calls from, uh, you know, I'm involved in Little League, uh, Little League is not coming back this year for, for Nogales, however, we are a strong baseball community, uh, but not just baseball, uh, soccer, tennis, and, and so, so forth, um, but, uh, there's, in baseball, there's tournaments being hosted, uh, in Phoenix, in Flagstaff, in Tucson, uh, Garden Grove, uh, just held, held, uh, four-team, uh, practice games, uh, on last weekend, and, uh, and people have been asking me not to have opened the fields for games, for tournaments, and stuff like that, but to open the fields for participation of the kids in practices. Um, I told them I'd put it in the agenda, uh, and obviously, if decided to, to, uh, to open, obviously, we would go with restrictions, just like all the tournaments have, and stuff like that, uh, obviously, limit it to, to a team, uh, no more than one team, that way you avoid any games and stuff like that, uh, and, um, I talked to the county, and I know the county is, has passed two of their three guidelines, they should be passing their third guidelines, and to, of being able to open, uh, open up more establishments, gyms, and stuff like that, um, but, uh, I think it's something the, the kids are asking for. And, uh, I would like to make a motion to open the parks, uh, and right now, I'm looking at basically Fleischer Field and Turley, Fleischer for baseball, obviously, Turley for soccer, and maybe our tennis courts, with restrictions, uh, obviously, you know, no more than one team, no more than so many people, uh, and, uh, obviously, no games, no games, nor practices, no fans, you know, even parents, uh, I've talked to people that handle, uh, club teams and stuff like that, and, uh, they, they're aware of all the requirements that they do in, in tournaments, because they, they're, they're going out and playing up in, uh, Tucson and Phoenix in games. Individuals are associated with teams from Phoenix and from Tucson that are participating in, in games out, outside Nogales, but they wanna be able to practice in their hometown. So, like I said, I'd like, see, uh, get a motion to open up Fleischer, Turley, and the tennis courts, uh, with restrictions for, uh, the city of Nogales.
Second. Go ahead.
I, I can see the councilman saying, the only place where I'm confused in is the, your statement that's very broad on restrictions. Do we wait? I, I would prefer that, uh, we get this developed and approve it formally at Wednesday's meeting, that way we understand what the restrictions are, because then we do this, and everybody walks out, well, they didn't say, we don't know, and it turns out to be worse. So if we're gonna develop a public policy, let's make sure we do it right, or make a direction to have the parks and recreation develop the opening of this park with restrictions, and to put it in writing, and then we can vote on that.
I agree.
Yeah, because, uh, I don't agree just opening Turley and Flecher. The minute you open Turley and Flecher, Pearson's gonna be full of people. Challenger is full of people.
Okay, it's already, already-
Challenger, they're going in there playing, jumping over the fence and playing already.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, without any authorization, so, so, you can't, you just can't put two fields.
And Mayor, I did not include, uh, Pearson, because, you know, it's, it's, it's property of the school.
It doesn't matter, because they're gonna start playing over there, wants to see somebody playing over there.
That's why I did not involve, uh, Pearson, yeah.
Yeah, Memorial Park, over here, all the people are gonna-
But those, you know, Memorial and Little, Memorial and Little League, we, the city controls, so I-
The minute you see somebody playing, councilman, they're gonna be playing everywhere, because they're gonna say, everything's open now. So that's, you know, that, that's my concern, you know, that, 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 we have to be very careful. I talked to Mister Pachulia, and, and, uh, you know, the restrictions, we can't have recreation, uh, personnel, uh, making sure that somebody's doing their thing, we're gonna be looking at that.
And Mayor, uh, and that's the thing, you know, with the same restrictions, uh, definitely, you know, we're, our sunlight's going down before, before seven o'clock now. Restrictions, no practicing at nights, uh, restrictions, like I said, uh, no more than one team, uh, restrictions, um, no, no fans, no parents can stay around, and that's something, you know, obviously, the coaches gotta take care, uh, but, uh, you know, and I left it to those, those, uh, three parks, you know, Turley, Fleischer, and, and the tennis courts, you know, I know Memorial and, and Little League are, are there, but it's a trial, it's, you know, I don't wanna open up everything, and, and I wanna try it. The other thing we gotta, we, that we know, and I know, uh, si- Parks and Rec, and, and basically, parks will reseed in October, so it's, it's a monthly trial we could do. And, you know, they normally shut, shut us down for baseball in October, due to the, the requirements of the city, of the Parks and Rec, maintaining their fields with reseeding, you know, it's something, I can tell them, don't reseed, because we're gonna open again the parks. I agree, they, they have to reseed and keep the normal, uh, maintenance of, of the parks, and, and that's totally agreeable, you know, I'm not trying to disturb what they do, because they do a great job with our fields, and I'm, and I'm totally aware. That's why, you know, I'm letting everybody know, that, and it's only, right now, we're looking at maybe a month at most, that we could try it and see what happens, and after they reseed, and after they reopen, then we can make it, uh, look at it, you know, for the long term. But, um, I agree with Mister Verona, if on Wednesday, you want me to talk with Marcel and talk to, see what kinda, how we could do the guidelines and, and restrictions, and put it in writing, and we'll set it up for, for Wednesday.
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, we'll do that. Yes.
I drove through Tucson not too long ago, and I was looking at, most of their parks are open, and people are using the parks, and I see people walking and doing their exercise, and I see kids practicing, maybe we can check with what kind of policies and guidelines they have for the use of their parks.
Well, our parks are open too here, but we said that where nobody could get together and play ball, and play anything, because that, that's where you get, you know, in groups. But the park is open, you can come and walk, you can go in the parks, all the parks you can walk.
I, I saw-
You know, Marcel told me that the one on Challenger, people go and walk around the track, you know, that, I don't see any problem, you know, I, I'm for opening up the state, you know, but also, I'm for keeping those numbers low.
Yeah.
And I think we're doing very good right now. We don't wanna stir anything up to start bringing those numbers back to the teens, and, I mean, we're, we haven't, we haven't hit the teens in the past week and a half, two weeks, our numbers are very good right now. And, and the one reason they're good is because we're socially distancing, and we're wearing masks, when there's a place where you cannot socially distance, and, 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 and you don't wanna see, you know, groups of, of a lot of people getting together in any way, you know, look what's happening in the universities, they opened them up, and two weeks later, and now they're closing them up, nine hundred cases in two weeks, you know?
On university, it's more, you're talking more of the party they're doing, uh, but, you know-
Doesn't, doesn't take much of a party.
The reason I bring it up is because maybe they have guidelines, and for us, for the future, you know, maybe in a couple of months, we can reopen, and we can just set up a new policy and guidelines to do that. I'm not saying go ahead and do it right now.
Yeah.
We can check-
But, but, that's why, the good thing about it is that you, you got, you have guidelines.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, who's gonna follow the guidelines? The parents, or you're gonna do it, or who? Recreation's not gonna do it.
Mm-hmm.
Who's gonna follow the guidelines? Who's gonna go over there and say, oh, wait a minute, there's too many people on the field, uh, this and that, somebody's gonna have to follow the guidelines.
Let me, let me check, you know, I've, you know, I've got, uh-
Somebody's gonna be there to make-
Tucson yesterday opened their, their Ramadas and, and playgrounds and some sports courts, uh, you know, there's tournaments being played this weekend, uh, from the fourth to the seventh in Phoenix, uh, you know, Labor Day, obviously, Kingman, Prescott, Flagstaff, uh, baseball tournaments for youth from seven to fourteen years old, but let me, let me look into the guidelines they're doing, and as far as following, Mayor, you know, basically, I think, uh, we leave it up to, you know, the coaches, and, obviously, anybody, if me, or, or, uh, you know, a PD sees anybody, then our next decision is gonna close them back down. I, you know, they're, they're the ones that want it open, but they break them, they pay for it, I understand.
All right, let's bring it back on Wednesday, John.
Wednesday, I'll bring, make him, uh-
We need to withdraw the motion.
He's, he's basically with, yes.
Yeah.
Mayor, I, I hear that he's withdrawing the motion, so-
But, John, there's gonna be a number two on that, on, uh, the agenda on Wednesday.
Council, make a motion so we can get it done right.
Make a motion, so, so, John, we put it on, uh, on next, uh, Wednesday's, uh, meeting, after the housing meeting, uh, so we could, I could present the council, Mayor, with the, with the guidelines and, and necessities to open, reopen the fields as far as, uh, Fleischer, Turley, and tennis courts.
Second.
Got it.
Mr. Mayor, I, I, I don't know if you wanna hear about, um, from the Parks and Rec Director before you take a vote, or, or if it makes a difference, or you just wanna wait till Wednesday to hear from the Parks and Rec Director?
No.
He's, he's there now, if you wanna hear from him now.
No, that, that's all right, that's all right, we can, we can wait till then, get the councilman, talk to him.
Okay.
And see what we need, uh, to, to be able to get this done, uh, in a safe fashion, and, and, uh, it's gonna be hours, don't it?
Yeah.
Hours, you can be playing, uh-
No, no after-
No lights turned on?
No lights, no, no.
Something like that, you know, the, you talk to Marcel, is that Marcel in a position right now, because, you know, I, I think, uh-
I appreciate-
I think that'd be the best thing to do, and, 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 uh, and this way, we can see the guidelines, and we can, we can look at everything, and how you present it.
Okay, Mayor, I appreciate it.
All in favor, signify by saying hi.
Hi.
Opposed? All right, it's gonna be on the agenda on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Okay, that agenda's getting bigger and bigger by the minute, okay? Do not ask for another one.
I haven't asked for one, Mr. Verona.
That was between Mister Verona and-
No, I haven't asked for it.
You did, with the city manager.
You're next, John.
No, that was Mister Hernandez.
Hernandez, no, that's, that's his fault, that's true.
It's your fault.
Why is it my fault?
No, that's all right, Mister Hernandez, we'll, we'll let you slide.
Discuss that on Wednesday, too.
We'll discuss. Okay, number seven.
Uh, thank you, councilman.
Thank you.
Uh, number seven, discussion, direction, possible action, city and Nogales coronavirus, COVID-nineteen guidelines to reopen, that's reopen, yeah, the building here.
City hall.
It's not the fields.
City hall.
City hall.
Mr. Mayor, it's, uh, currently, we're under, uh, uh, basically, we have, uh, our public, uh, building was closed to the public only by appointment, so-
Mr. Mayor, it's, currently, we're under, uh, basically, we have our public, uh, building was closed to the public only by appointment or some restriction.
I think we should continue with it like this.
We continue with that policy for another month, short of the ball blitz that you're gonna discuss next Wednesday. But, but for, for man, council's consideration, obviously.
I think I, I...
Your recommendation.
I already said it.
I didn't hear you.
I recommend that we go another month, uh, we're keeping, uh, our municipal building closed to the, to the public. I can tell you, we haven't had any reported issues that I'm aware of. Uh, we've been able to accommodate all of our constituents, either by going outside and talking to them, or, or, or taking it over Zoom, and other means. Different types of phone meetings, stuff like that.
Motion to accept the recommendations of the city manager to keep our municipal facilities closed through September the 30th.
Second.
What's your next, to the first meeting? Can we get to the first meeting?
Second, Esther Diddy, Esther Diddy.
Mayor, just a correction, it's through...
October.
October, it's through our, through October the 7th.
Yes. Okay. Now, further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, have it done, you got it, John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. This meeting has gone further than what I expected. Let me see. Uh, John, is this presentation on the streets, is it gonna be long, or is it...
Move it to Wednesday.
You wanna move it to Wednesday?
Yeah, wanna move it to Wednesday.
So, the presentation on streets is what you asked for, on the...
Yes, yes, on the future, the work that we're gonna be doing, and Frank Reed, and all that, I kinda saw.
Correct.
Can we move it to Wednesday?
Absolutely, and, and that'll give you, that'll give you the opportunity to go through the presentation and develop any questions that I have.
Yes, you guys are getting good at this, it always happens. So that one goes on, what, Mr. Guerra, are you on the line?
Yes, ma'am, Mr. Mayor, yes, sorry.
Estabas comiendo, estabas comiendo, estabas comiendo.
Yeah.
Hey, Juan, we're gonna, we're gonna bring it back on Wednesday, next week, okay?
Okay, great.
All right, you're gonna be the third one that we place on Wednesday.
And no more.
And no more, and no more.
Okay, cool.
It'll be right after the housing meeting, Juan.
We should have the housing today.
All right, that's me for you.
Thank you, Juan, we'll see you, we'll see you there. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Yes. No, we already did it.
I seconded it.
Yeah. I'm sorry I didn't mean any of this. Okay, orders, number six. No, yes, I did. Okay, number one, consideration, possible action of order 2020 dash 09 dash 049. An order of the council of the city of Magals, Arizona, approving a professional services contract with Next Gen Engineering, Inc., for the design of lateral connections to the international alcohol interceptors. So...
Second.
Discussion, go ahead, husband.
Uh, Mr. Kissinger. This, I just wanna be clear on lateral connections to the... That doesn't have anything to do with, I couldn't understand the, the background, the background that you did was well presented. Doesn't that have anything to do with the, the alternative path?
No, this doesn't directly have that.
Okay.
I can explain what this is, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
IBWC is in the process of slip lining, the IY. Uh, slip lining will go from manhole to manhole. Typically, all lateral sewer connection should go to a manhole. We have several laterals that are tied straight into the IY that are not going to manhole. This, this engineer will correct that so they can slip line. Thank you, John.
I didn't quite get it, it was kinda technical.
Mr. Mayor. What it is, is that the, the connection from our streets, from our residential areas and everything, go sometimes directly to the line. And we have to have it at the manhole, that's a proper way for, for the distribution of sewer into the IY. So we need to have these installed before we do the slip line.
Okay, got it.
Yes.
I think it's gonna say this, but it is. John, this $149,000 grant that we get for this?
Yes.
Is this for that just one project, or is it gonna cover the whole thing?
It's just for that project.
For the engineering.
For the engineering.
For the engineering.
There's only a few.
There's only a few that go to a manhole.
Legacy connections. Well, I'll give you an example, one of the post office.
Really?
Yeah. One, uh, one, uh, one is, uh, Carom Park, and, and I know enough see, Carom Park was built, probably...
Oh, if you know before, I used to go watch the fishes there.
So...
Is there a match on that grid?
No.
Yeah, there's, I know that, you know, manhole is a proper place where you dump everything.
So this design is to construct new manholes and reroute the lawyers and things?
I understand. Call for the question.
Rapidly, that's, that's my life. See, every time you get to orders, notice that Mr. Messi, I always call to the question. They don't let me finish. Not like orders.
Alejandro is one who worked for the market, he's going to do that job. Good job, Alejandro.
Good job, Alejandro. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Yes, have it, thank you very much. Number two, consideration, possible action of order 2020 dash 09 dash 050. An order of the council of the city of Magals, Arizona, canvassing and declaring the results of the municipal primary election held in August 4th, 2020. Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Yes, have it. Number three, consideration, possible action of order 2020 dash 09 dash 051. An order of the council of the city of Magals, Arizona, adopting an amendment to the city personnel manual, chapter 17, regarding use of overtime. The second?
Second.
Discussion?
Hearing none, all in favor, signify by...
I wanna hear what he has to say on this one, because I, I wanna see how this is related to Stone Garden.
Go ahead, John.
Mr. Mayor, this is a, an amendment to our current chapter 17 of our overtime, uh, policy. What this policy brings to us is a limitation on amount of hours any one particular employee within Magals can work to 30% of his scheduled hours in, in a work week. Uh, I believe a normal work week for most of our employees at Fire is eighty hour, or, I'm sorry if I said work week, I meant a... Pay period.
Pay period.
Pay period.
Eighty hours.
Pay period is eighty hours.
Every two weeks?
Uh, every two weeks. So a pay period is eighty, eighty hours, uh, 30% would be twenty four, twenty four hours. So they can only...
What is, what is it right now?
102.
If we...
I'm sorry.
Go 102.
Well, well, how much can they work overtime around?
There is no limit.
There is no limit.
There is no limit. So there, there is opportunity with the permission of the director that they can exceed those 24 hours, uh, and, and again, I just wanna let you know that it's different for Fire. It's 30% for Fire, because there were different schedules. Um, directors have the opportunity to allow their employees under circum, uh, if there are any circumstances, to go past the, the 24 hours. But they need to detail a report to the city manager in writing and justification on why, uh, that occurred. Uh, that will give management a better opportunity to, uh, learn from why we're exceeding overtime hours, where we're exceeding it, what's the circumstances, and analyze that data to make better policies to, to reduce the overtime that we're paying. Uh, it was brought forward, especially in conversation when we're talking about police and Fire, uh, because of the, we all talking about the pension liability, right? Uh, we all know, or we should know that police and Fire are paying sixty, sixty, roughly 63 cents between both of them on average, uh, for every dollar earned, for going towards pension. Uh, that could be a high number, uh, the only way, there's no way we can reduce that percentage, because that percentage is given by PSDRS, uh, to, to, uh... So the only way we can manage what we are paying annually to that is either reduce employees, which we're not inclined to do, or reduce the hours that we work. So this helps reduce those hours and spread them out, so not just for one individual, it's, it's contained on. Uh, I recommend that we pass this, uh, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, if there's any difficulties with this, or requiring, uh, some policy with it, I'm, I'm willing to bring it back for future consideration. I do find myself with this, I've spoken with, uh, uh, both, uh, Fire Chief and Police Chief about this, they're, they're comfortable with this policy, and, uh, the other director, they're comfortable too. Like I said, there's an opportunity for them to exceed the policy under, uh, the circumstances. Councilman, will you say something?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Kissinger, I, I think this is a great step forward from the problems that we've been having with the unfunded liability. I, I would like to ask you, uh, the chief of police brought to my attention, uh, he brought me some documents that indicated that the federal government does cover the contributions to the overtime for Stone Garden. I have brought up in the meeting several times that I was under the impression they didn't, and that was one of the reasons that Pima County and the city of Tucson were getting out of it because of that. Just so that there's clarity and a great step forward, could we please have a report on that, so everybody here can see the documents that are presented, and find out so that we know factually that this is an accurate presentation, not yours.
Representation of the, them paying the...
Yes.
Oh, absolutely.
Would you please...
You want the backup doctors?
Yes, so everybody can see that, so that, I, I'm in favor of this, because then, if they're contributing that, then what we're trying to do with the unfunded liability is to make sure that when they decide to retire, we don't have all of this pension liability that we have. And that's what this does, this policy prevents that from happening.
It, it helps. It helps with that.
Well, it does help.
Yeah, it doesn't cure the ongoing liability or, 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 uh, unfunded liability, but it helps reduce it, doesn't mean one small step to help reduce it. There's other, other things that we're gonna have to consider to...
Well, I hope you do, because we can't continue to get ourselves deeper into debt with these unfunded liabilities. We can't continue to do it.
There's a lot of factors in it, other than just overtime.
I hope you bring those factors to us.
Well, that's why we're paying Mr. Vasquez and, and Pad to go through that government, so they, the, the analysis to tell us.
But I thought that you were referring to internal policies within the departments that we need to correct right there beyond this...
Absolutely, absolutely, there, there's still opportunity.
Thank you, Mayor.
Hey, thank you. You guys were having a good conversation, you wanna keep on?
No, I'm good, that's enough.
Okay, call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Yes, have it. Okay, seven, ordinances, ordinances. One, consideration, possible action, an ordinance, oh, 2020 dash 09 dash 006. An ordinance of the council of the city of Magals, Arizona, amending ordinance number, number 20X, city of Magals zoning ordinance, and rezoning approximately seven acres of undeveloped land from SR, SFR to MFR.
So, so, second?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Mr. Kissinger? Yeah, Mr. Vassier?
He is.
Can he give us a background on this?
Absolutely.
Are they gonna use it for, I just wanna see if they're gonna build houses there, that would be nice.
We're running multi-family, multi-family.
Apartment.
Apartment.
Mr. Vass, uh, do you wanna give an explanation on, on this ordinance check?
Hey, Captain, I think you tricked us, we're good evening, Mayor Council, this is Vass. Uh, this is a rezoning request put together by Mr. Martinez, um, to rezon seven acres of land exclusively for church. Uh, Mr. Martinez has preliminary plans representing a group, a real estate group, to develop either multi-family residential duplexes or tight places, or traditional subdivision. And so I think he, they're still figuring that out from a business perspective, but they have plans to, to construct multi-family residential out there.
And Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vass, how was the planning and zoning's reception to this project?
Uh, the planning and zoning recommended it four to zero. They had a few following questions for Mr. Martinez regarding his future plans to develop that area. They also had concerns about the, the traffic generation that this development may be providing in the future. And so, but in general, they've allowed it four, four to zero to recommend it for approval.
And so do we need to worry about anything, or when they submit their building plans, the traffic studies will be done?
Yeah, so that's up to Mr. Martinez, if he wants to pursue a traditional subdivision, then he has to pursue subdivision process, which means, uh, getting plan approval in, before the planning zoning commission, and then approved again by Mayor Council, or he wants to develop other type of projects that fall to the multi-family residential. That's up to him, that's the decision between him and his partner, uh, but in general, I believe that, you know, either route that he goes will, will have, uh, those reviews kind of couple the processes in terms of evaluating traffic impacts, setbacks, those type of things.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I conclude. Okay, thank you. Further discussion? Okay, well, did I, we have a motion?
Yes, on a second.
I just wanted to see if you guys were awake. Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Yes, have it, thank you.
Mayor, since it was unanimous, and it's an ordinance, is there a motion to waive the second meeting?
Is there a motion?
So moved, I make the motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay.
Well, to vote, to vote on this, waiving.
All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, have it, thank you. Number eight, mayor and councils' report on current events. Let's start with you, Mr. Hennessy.
Just... About your visitation to Wisconsin.
Or, or I could report on, on, on Councilman Verona's haircut.
Yeah, did you get a haircut?
Yes, you got a haircut, where did you get it, was the question.
Oh, okay, now, tell me that.
I think you went to San Francisco with, with Pelosi there to get a haircut, so.
Oh, there you go, okay, now, Councilman Diaz, do you have anything?
Not really, just been busy with BFW stuff, training, uh, I have a lot of things going on with the BFW. We're having our winter conference in Lake Havasu in October. It's gonna be a, you know, it's a, it's a hospital banquet and stuff like that.
Person, a person? They're gonna have a conference?
Person, person, right.
They're gonna have the conference?
The masks is so ridiculous, you know, doing all that stuff, with all the precautions.
Mine is still all virtual.
With all the precautions.
Councilwoman, do you have anything?
Uh, I had a request from the Mexican consulate, uh, they wanted to have a rally September 12th for the Fiesta Patrias. Uh, well, just as a comment, they had requested, uh, weeks ago to the police department, they never got an answer. So when they called me, it take, it took me no more than five minutes to call Mr. Kissinger, and it was done in less than seven minutes. So... So, thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
Proud of you, Mr. Kissinger. See, they should have called him. Councilman Barona.
No, I'm just disappointed, Mr. Mayor, because I want to ask Mr. Kissinger for something, and it takes at least twenty-four hours.
Well.
I wanna get that.
Call me then.
Call Councilwoman.
Mr. Mayor, I attended a webinar of the Arizona Commerce Authority on empowering rural communities navigating the Economic Development Agency CARES Act. Uh, it was hosted by Keith Watson and Cindy Patac, who is the Federal Economic Development Representative for the state of Arizona. And they talked about investment priorities, critical infrastructure, opportunity zones, broadband, which is very important for our community to get the broadband. And there are monies available, they talked about the feasibility, the achievability, having a clear path to success, measurable outcomes, and positive return on investment. And right now, we can get eighty percent or more of funding, you can only get that if Nogales has declared, uh, distressed, I'm sorry, yeah, depressed area. And right now, the entire United States is declared, uh, this, depressed, harry. So, I think that this is something that the staff should look into, to file some grants, so that we can get that on economic development. I think this is good, and you might look into, Mr. Kissinger, to that, because there's, they're telling us that there's money available, and they want to spend it here in Arizona.
Can you report?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilman, arise, Mayor.
I don't have anything.
Nothing? Councilman?
Yeah, well, as your representative, uh, to the EBTB, I attended my first meeting, uh, basically out of the public.
Did you put them on the place?
Well, getting there.
Very good, man.
But, uh.
Hey, one step at a time.
You know, I've been, uh, given all the information, uh, reading upon them, uh, their bylaws and everything, and they, they welcomed me with good faith in working together, and, uh, there's, I know there's, uh, three other, uh, citizens, uh, that will be also, uh, replacing, uh, uh, people there in, in the committee, so it looks.
They selected the persons already, and?
Uh, Mr. JB Manson is, is one, and then a person from, uh, from the hospital, Mr. Marcel. You know the names, there's, uh, but there's creepy people, and I know that basically JB Manson was one of them. But, uh, three people were selected, and, and then myself represented the city. Okay, and I, today they had, uh, I attended the flu shot.
I did too.
All good. And they had a very good turnout. They were, uh, you actually running out of shots when, when I was there, but they had a good, very good turnout.
Yeah, I went to get mine, and they didn't, they didn't have any more. Oh, my dear, I never did a shot, I know very well.
They were doing, they were doing a good job.
To Batzilier, is he on there?
The names, uh.
The names are the people.
Marcel, can you share with us the names of the carmen?
I don't know. I don't know what.
Marcel, Carmen.
You? Hello?
You know what, you didn't run.
Alright. Okay. On mine, on August nineteenth, uh, uh, Arizona Public Media interview regarding the economic consequences of COVID- nineteen in, in Nogales. Did you see it? August twenty-seventh, Arizona Mexico Commission Congressional Border Briefing regarding improvements to Deconsini Port. That's about the reconfiguration, remoderation of, of the port, and the feasibility study. Uh, August thirty-first, interview with the National Immigration Forum regarding our nation's immigration policies and my perspective. And also, the same day, I attended the overdose awareness day event, and read a proclamation at the Circles of Peace. Nice building, did you see that? They were really nice. They were really nice. That's all, well, it was a short month for me. Okay, uh, future agenda items?
So, uh, uh, are the conundrums?
Okay, these future agenda items would be for the October meeting, not Wednesday.
Not Wednesday.
Carmen? Carmen? Carmen, could you give us the?
I mean, I had, I had a reboot.
Oh. Could you give us the names of the, the new members of the EBT board?
Yes, so, uh, first, obviously, we have Councilmember, uh, Colquimarrenado, we have, uh, Mr. Phil Stoudt, uh, we have, uh, Mrs. Sharon Ehrman, and we have Mr. JB Manson.
Okay. Thank you, Carmen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Stoudt and Ms. Ehrman, those are the ones I didn't recall.
So, how did they go with the selection process?
Uh, basically, they had the board members, uh, existing board members, uh, give the.
The names?
Five names, and then they, they went from there.
Good.
And they, then, and then I think, uh, obviously, the chairman was the one that made them a call, make sure they were willing to participate and all that.
Alright, uh, motion to adjourn?
Hold on, hold on.
Yes.
Hold on.
Come on, let's.
Picture agenda items.
Yeah, Wednesday, you can, we can kick ass.
Well, not for Wednesday.
I know, you're not gonna get it for Wednesday.
Mayor, you know, it's basically pertaining to the letter we got right now on, on the PD, on the fire department, I mean. Uh, I think we should look into it and see, you know, basically where, where we're at, what's going on. Uh, I've heard comments, good and bad.
On the anonymous letter?
But.
Do you want to respond on that anonymous letter?
I want, I want to get down to the point, see what's going on, Mayor.
I don't get anywhere with it, but if you want to, go ahead.
You know, I just, I wanna see if our chief and, and, you know, there, anybody that would come forward and talk to the council, see what's going on.
Well, if we could get somebody to come forward, stand on the podium or stand somewhere, it'd be okay, but if we're just gonna sit here and discuss an anonymous letter? I get a lot of those letters in my office, and I do, I, I just throw them in the trash can, a lot of them. Because if they don't have a name and a person that wants to be responsible for what they write, you should have been listening to them.
We'll be chasing our tails.
That's how we're gonna do it.
We'll never know who wrote it. And, and I, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, if, if we start discussing this, if act, first of all, it's a personnel issue, should we discuss it?
Yes, none of, none of the council meetings.
If we start doing investigations on every anonymous letter that we receive, th, and, and people know that?
No.
I think if you just.
We'll open up a big can of worms or something.
But, come on, you're doing an investigation right now based on an anonymous letter.
With, so, we do look into, uh, information that comes forward, that's credible information, and we look into it, but we don't investigate every anonymous letter that we get. Uh, there is nothing in that, uh, letter that you all received that has specifics of anything. So, it's somebody's opinion. I, I don't investigate those, but.
But it was important enough that it wouldn't, didn't get up and cling to us.
It, it came to you because I gave you a copy of it today, it was actually only mailed to three people, that I'm aware of. Now, if you got a copy somewhere else, I don't know.
We got it today.
Okay, I gave you that copy.
I've gotten anonymous letters about employees, about employees that they're not doing their work, that I know that's, is false. I've gotten anonymous letters from within one department talking about another department in the same department. I feel only you, how many I got. I get, and I get, and I get anonymous letters about, I've gotten anonymous letters about John, I've gotten anonymous letters about council, but I never talked to.
Anonymous letters about Mayor, too.
Yeah, and I don't talk, and I don't talk to you about it, what I do is I tear it up and I throw it in the trash can. Because if you put a name to it, and the person wants to stand right here and tell me, and tell you, I'm the one that wrote it, then you have facts, then let's talk about it.
Well, we have, Mr. Mayor, we have a policy.
Yes.
I don't think we should. We have a policy that you adopted that addresses these issues. And if you are aware of the anonymous writer, Mr. Marona, I would encourage you to ask him to follow our policy. That's a fair way to deal with it.
And if you know who wrote it? Dilecamiale? Okay, 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 se presente? Write another one with the name.
If there is a member of this council that wants an anonymous letter up on the agenda for discussion, because we have concerns, we should be respectful to that council person to put it on the agenda. Then if you want to bring something up, that this is a policy and all that in front of the public, that's fine. And if there's four of us that agree with him, that we want to have an investigation, because we are the ones that oversee what happens here. If the city manager wants to ignore it, that's your business. If we want to take action, we, four of us, can vote to take action. But don't brush off anybody who wants a future agenda item. If you think it's wrong, I've dealt with, with anonymous letters too, and the anonymous letters have come out to be true.
But we're gonna be talking about an employee.
Let Mr. Massey guide us. I'm saying what he, if a council person brings up that he wants to discuss something on the agenda, you put it on the agenda. Mr. Massey says we can't do this, that's a different thing. But he has the, the respect of being a council person, an elected official, and if he wants something on the agenda, we should be respectful for that, and put it on the agenda.
Do you have that letter?
I have the copy of that letter, yes, sir.
Can that be discussed in the council?
There's parts of it that can certainly be discussed at the part, uh, council meeting, but yes.
You're looking for clarification, that's all, man.
Put it on the agenda.
Four, are you?
Wednesday's agenda?
No, 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 no. No, 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 no.
Next month.
That's in April.
Next month.
Next month?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Did I turn up? I don't have anything, I want to go home.
Thank you, sir.
Do you want to place that on the agenda?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.